I have seven o'clock, so welcome to the Tuesday, December 21st, 2021 City Commission meeting, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, next item is Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Reddy.
No real comments here, just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays this weekend. Hopefully, the weather is good, as it has been, and hopefully, nobody had any serious damage with the storm we had last week. Thank you.
Good. Good. Linda?
Just welcome, welcome to winter, today is the first day, and just happy holidays to everyone. It'll be nice just to relax for two weeks or so, and not have a schedule, and enjoy our families and our holidays and our religious events, so, good.
Yeah, but I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas also, and, you know, we still have lots of events going on in the city. You can check the CVB website, I'm sure they'll point that out tonight. You can click on there, and there's plenty of, plenty of things still going on, some New Year's events at the Discovery Center, Blue Mountain Hotel, and, well, we lost the tree in the tunnel, we got all kinds of lights still along points and every place else, so you can still get out and enjoy the, the lights and the holiday atmosphere. So, hang in there, the holiday spirit's still alive, just a little wind, that's all it was. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item. Now, this is a priority item. Due to the Kansas State University football team playing in the Texas Bowl game on January 4th, 2022, at 8:00 PM, the City Commission would like to cancel the regular 7:00 PM City Commission meeting on January 4th, 2022, and call a special meeting at 5:30 PM that same day. So what we need is a motion from the Commission to make that happen, so we can watch the game.
Mayor, I move that we approve a call for a special City Commission meeting to be conducted in the City Commission Room, City Hall, 1101 Point Avenue, Manhattan, Kansas, on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, at 5:30 PM, and shall be open to the purpose, to open to the public for the purpose of proclaiming January 15th to 17th, January, January 15th to 17th, 2022, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Community Celebration and Day of Service, also for approving amendments of the regular City Commission meeting held on Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, also for approving claim register number 2989, and also for conducting the reorganization of the City Commission, and to hereby cancel the regularly scheduled legislative meeting for January 4th at 7:00 PM as set by the charter ordinance.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebro?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, are those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. The Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda for more discussion. I want to mention for Consent Agenda Item D, Second Reading of amended 2022 Salary Ordinance, that the full text of Section 12 of the ordinance has been corrected in the packet to reflect that it repeals prior ordinance number 7551 and all other ordinance in conflict therewithin. Okay, does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Sorry. I think on item F, bid and award for number two, Phase Nine of the North Campus Corridor improvements, I just want to reiterate to the public the funding source on that, and if, if Ron can just speak to the funding impact on that, just so the public is aware from where the $9 million that's proposed there is coming from.
Sure, Commissioner, as you know, as with all of the North Campus Corridor projects, we've had a variety of funding source, and we've kind of called it the North Campus Corridor Funding Package, and it's from a variety of sources. In this particular one, we were successful in getting a new KDOT cost share grant in the amount of $2.9 million, so it's a, a good portion about, of the project will be funded by it. We do have some utility improvements in the, in the section as well for water and sewer portions, I think maybe a little bit of storm water, and those would be absorbed by those respective utility funds. We also have, I, I correct myself, we have water, wastewater, and some stormwater funds that are part of that, and there, we are producing some new stormwater components that will certainly help with some of our watershed challenges, as we're diverting some of it that has gone to the south, back to the north watershed, which will help that situation. That's gonna impact, the stormwater fund alone's gonna impact about $800,000 worth. And then the other components of the Commission had, and the university has previously approved a total of up to $10 million in City University Fund financing for the whole project, as well as we have a $3 million dedication from the K-State Athletic Department for the whole project, and then we have pledged some economic development funds for it as well. So it's a, a good mix of funds that is going to fund the project.
I just wanted to highlight that in the sense that KDOT put in some of that money, and that wasn't the case before, so we're glad that KDOT's able, able to put in some grant money, along with the City University Funds. That took us a long time to decide, and that was very, I wouldn't say controversial, but it was a, a good place to take that money and invest back into the community and the North Campus Corridor, and from the KSU Athletics Department as well. So it's beneficial, and hopefully, and how many phases are there? We're on Phase Nine.
So we, this is Phase Nine that we're recommending award of tonight. Phase 10 was actually approved previously this year and is under construction. That's the stretch between North Manhattan and Dennison. The next project that would go under design, and I don't think it's even scheduled to be, we haven't even, we're about 30% design, I believe, we have, so we haven't even, we don't even have a design contract that to bring to you yet, but it would be, probably not go to bid till late '22, or maybe early '23, and it is the big intersection of Dennison and Kimball, and, and so it is actually 11?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, there are some other ones, but they aren't critical, at least at this time, for the overall aspect. That intersection project would then link this project and the project that's under construction, and then in front of NBAF, as well as link into the Dennison North by the fire station there that hasn't been done, and link into the project that we did with the county.
Right. And this has been in, about five years in, I think?
Yep.
Into all the projects. Okay, just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Just to clarify that I will be voting no on Item D3, which is relating to special events and possession of alcoholic liquor and cereal beverages in Aggieville Downtown City Park and Twin Oaks, and the original proposal was to have the city administration just make all those approvals, and I think the City Commission needs to be involved, and that's what you found, I think, with some of that from the state law, that requires, what did you say here? Department of Revenue requires that any special event with alcohol that happens on a city street sidewalk or alley must be approved by resolution by the governing body. So, anyway, I'm gonna vote no on that. I'm just not interested in expanding alcohol use to every venue in town and on open streets and alleys with very little control.
Okay, thank you. I want to make just one comment on the salary ordinance, because I got some emails about that, which, which was concerned about what, what do Commissioners get paid, because it says here, City Commission. It's about a $20 a month pay raise, is what is in here, and so a City Commissioner makes $6,000 a year, that's $500 a month, and the mayor, since the mayor has to sign 1,000 documents every night and do some other things, gets paid a little bit more, $7,200 a year. So that, that's what the official salaries of the Commission would be, starting in January, I believe. Okay, and of course, I'll vote no on that, because I don't believe in giving myself a pay raise. Okay, so at that point, I think we can take a motion on the consent agenda?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, about to leave that off. There's any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Now we can take a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
I vote yes on all of the items except D3.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebro?
Yes, I enthusiastically support the mayor's salary increase for the second time in the month of December.
Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes, on all items except D1, the salary ordinance.
Motion carries five to zero, with the exception of Item D1, which carries four to one, and Item D3, which also carries four to one.
Okay, then we can move on to the one item we have on the general agenda, which is an entire paragraph here. Receive the 2020 Joint Economic Development Annual Report with 2021 updates, along with accomplishments, as well as goals, metrics, and core strengths for 2022. Consider 2022 Chamber of Commerce Economic Development and Fort Riley Promotion Agreements. Receive the 2021 Convention and Visitors Bureau Fourth Quarter Report, and consider the 2022 Tourism and Convention Contract. And we have a number of presenters, and Jason, if you want to lead off, that would be fine.
That's quite a mouthful. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to be in front of you this evening for an update on activities of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce and our partners. My name is Jason Smith, President and CEO of The Chamber. I'm privileged to introduce tonight's three presentations from our teams in Economic Development, Military Relations, and Tourism. I'm proud of our work for 2021, and excited about our accomplishments for this year and the opportunities that we have moving forward. Our community is the envy of many across the state, as we set the standard for public-private partnerships to enhance the economic prosperity and quality of life for our citizens. We believe that all three areas are important for the long-term fiscal health of the city, and would ask you to look favorably on the contracts presented to you this evening. We will begin this evening with our Economic Development Team reviewing activities for the year. That will be followed by Janet Nichols with the Military Relations Update, and we will conclude with Karen Hibbert, who will give her quarterly CVB report. So let's get started with our Economic Development Report. Two years ago, we came to you with the funding strategy for Region Reimagine. At that time, we asked for an increase to implement an aggressive program that would increase our capabilities across several areas, including business retention, entrepreneurship, and talent. This was in addition to our already revamped programs in business attraction, and our world-class partnership with Kansas State to leverage innovation for jobs. I'm proud of the progress we've made in all, all of these areas over the past two years, even with the additional challenges created by the pandemic and the recovery. In terms of our goal to work with companies on the creation of 500 new jobs and 10 million in new investment by the end of 2024, we have a good start. We have three local projects in the past 15 months that have generated 67 new jobs at well above the average wages, with over 28 million in capital investment. We also have an active prospect list that I believe gives us an opportunity to reach our goals much sooner than 2024. Darren will have the specifics in his presentation later, and you can also find these numbers on page 13 of the report that was just handed to you. Our private sector partners are excited about our progress. We are in the middle of our Advantage Manhattan Five Campaign, and are already well over 80% to our funding goal, with about 60% of our investors committed so far. Included in that number are six new annual investors at our highest level of 50,000-plus, but I'm most proud of the fact that of our top-level investors, we received 100% renewals for another five years of funding. Even though we aren't completed, we have well above the dollar-for-dollar annual match for both the Economic Development and Military Relations contracts committed through 2026. The changes we've had from 2019, in my opinion, are staggering. Some of the progress includes the creation of an entirely new promotional strategy and response package for potential new companies considering Manhattan, the increase in our pipeline of potential projects from less than 10 in 2019 to over 50 currently, a best-in-class business retention program, including over 50 personal company visits over the past 18 months, the launch of a talent attraction program that is already being used by local HR professionals to target key individuals for Manhattan positions, a robust community partnership called Spark, that for the first time is focused on enhancing the startup ecosystem for entrepreneurship, a presence at over 50 career fairs at colleges and universities in a four-state area to promote Manhattan jobs. These are just the major new initiatives, and don't address many of the other activities with, with which we are working on a continual basis. For the second year in a row, we are working with our partners at both the City of Manhattan and Kansas State University to provide a consolidated community economic development report. This partnership is not new. Manhattan has always been able to punch above its weight in competing for opportunities because we work together in ways other communities can only envy. However, we were a bit scattered in our reporting before moving into this model, and we hope you find it provides a bit more clarity in our activities and results. We have a number of other partners that we will reference in today's report. These include the agencies and organizations on your screen that provide some kind of resource or assistance to our community, and we consider to be an integral part of our program. The two entities in which most of our activities center is the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, which has our collaborative effort with Potawatomi County Economic Development, as well as Knowledge-Based Economic Development, or KBED, which includes our community and university partnerships. GMEP is gaining national recognition with site selection specialists and targeted companies, as, as we develop award-winning campaigns and strategies to attract potential job creators to our community. KBED has been around for a number of years and continues to lead our university-based economic development activities. We will hear from their representatives as part of this report as well. The critical item that I want to stress to everyone today is that it takes a team of many people to achieve the bold and aggressive strategy we have, we have adopted for economic development. We are fortunate to have all of our entities sharing the same vision for economic prosperity and working diligently for Manhattan citizens. But the reason we have to keep working are the challenges we face as a community. There have been unforeseen forces that have caused our economy to stagnate. We've discussed this now for a couple of years. To turn around the trends that challenge all of us, it takes an intentional strategy, which we have, a dedicated team, which we have, and the stamina to see the implementation through. We have the capacity to turn this trend if we stay the course. Additional data that is part of our reporting requirement is both here and in your information provided. Again, we continue to see challenges in population and job growth. We will be diving into these numbers further next month at our Leaders Retreat with Dr. Eric Higgins from Kansas State. Specifically, we've asked Dr. Higgins to examine both how we've recovered from the pandemic and how we compare to our regional peers, and we look forward to hearing the results on January 14th. We feel like we have the right strategy to forge ahead. We are finishing up year two of our Region Reimagine strategic plan and are already seeing results. You will hear about these throughout the remainder of our time. I'll conclude my comments by challenging all of us to continue to fight for Manhattan. I'm very optimistic and, quite frankly, very excited about some, some of our potential opportunities that lay in front of us. I believe 2022 will be a great year, and look forward to celebrating it with you all here next year. With that, I will happily turn over our presentation to Darren Solden, our Director of Economic Development.
I'm gonna reference the report that was included, a digital copy in your, in your packet, but we handed out the, handed out hot off the press some paper copies here this evening, and, and so I'll be referencing some page numbers as we go through that, so you might, you might keep it handy. But as Jason said, I think we're on a really strong path as a group. We do have a great team, not just within our building at The Chamber, but across the community and across the region with all of our partners. So with that, I'd like to dive into some of the great things that we're doing, and some of the great things that have occurred over the last year, and some of the progress that's being made. Obviously, recovery is still incredibly important to us, we, we know that that is not an easy task, it's something that takes getting down in the trenches and working directly with businesses. It also requires us looking forward, and one of the things we did this year was, at the Leaders Retreat at the end of July, presented a catalyst investment program, and so this, you can reference on pages four and five of the, of the report. These are things that we believe within the, the five strategic areas that we're focused on, investments that as a community and as a region we need to make. Those come from a variety of sources, some of those are pretty well-defined at this point, some of them still require some work to get there, but we believe that will be more effective, and these strategies will, will have a larger impact if, if as a community we come together and, and make those investments. One key component of that, talking about going after funding, is, is some of the federal monies that's working its way down through the state, and so Jason, along with some representatives from the university, went here about a month ago and presented to the State Spark Committee. You may have seen the news yesterday, there's starting to be some action as it relates to economic development with some of those funds at a state level, and so we are gonna be, continue to stay actively engaged, and the important thing to remember is, try to find ways to bring some of those dollars into the community to have an impact on our local economic development. Speaking of planning and looking to the future, you know, you'll hear more about this later, but some great things coming out of K-State, it's an exciting time with the work that's being done on their prosperity plan, and look forward to the implementation of that, not just in our community, but across this, across the state going forward. An area that's really dear to my heart on the small business side, and something I think that's incredibly important, you know, last year, we, you all approved the emergency loan program, right? At the beginning of COVID, we were able to help some businesses in a very difficult time, and we didn't necessarily know what the next steps were from the feds, and, and or where money was coming from, to help those folks when they were closed down. We're able to work on getting CARES monies out into the community and into the region. This year, we, we reinvigorated some programs that we've had in the past, one of those was our eCommunity Loan Program, and we're able to help a local business transition up in Riley. We're also in the process of working a project in Manhattan right now with a, a potentially eCommunity Loan, and, and look forward to being, we'll share that in the near future. But that direct aid to businesses programs that are directly impacting small businesses and allowing, in this case, both of these cases, recently for a business transition, so a key employee to purchase a business from the, from the original owner. And then childcare, childcare is something we've heard over and over and over again across the community. George hears a lot of it in our business retention and expansion efforts, you'll see it in the results of our, of our business conditions report. We formed a task force this year within our Economic Development Committee to take a look at childcare, bring together folks from across the spectrum, on the public side, on the private side, from Fort Riley, from the university, providers, those that need those services, and, and try to get to the heart of how can we look at driving additional capacity in this community? It really is a workforce issue, it's something that, that, especially coming out of COVID, as folks are, are looking at childcare, and you saw the numbers Jason presented earlier, we need more people in our labor force to fill jobs, that, that that's an area that we feel like we can have an impact on as well. Jobs is obviously something you hear about from us a lot, these are the highlights of the last three years, or I'm sorry, the last two years, about the last 15 months, as Jason said, BevHub was one that, we came to you last year, and we appreciate the support there, we're able to celebrate in, in July, or June, I'm sorry, with their ribbon cutting, and, and a great facility out there by the airport in the, in the business park. Elsie Holdings is another one that had a, a city component to it, were here earlier this year for economic development incentives, really thought that that project was, was important, because we were able to help a local business grow, bring in professionals to the community, whether they be K-State graduates or coming from the outside, but we're also able to leverage some state dollars, a very strong state incentive package there as well, and, and have our local folks here at the city be able to play a role in that also. And then Canopy, that's one that you can read some more about in the, in the report, but, but a company that spun out of Kansas State, and, and some really exciting things for the future there, and, and ultimately engaged across the country with what they do, and so we'll hear some more about that later. But as far as the, the progress towards the, the jobs goal, again, that five-year, 500-year jobs goal, we're standing at 67. You can see those average salaries do come in above the, above the community average, and, and several projects with some really strong capital investment. We're excited about what the future holds, like our, our current prospect list is, is very strong, and some of those we've advanced quite a ways down the road, and so, looking forward to bring some really strong, really strong opportunities before you in the coming year. Noted these on the previous page, you can see Governor Kelly there, cutting the ribbon in BevHub back in, back in June, and, and down at the bottom, NBAF, you know, it's, you remember that that is ongoing, and, and their hiring continues, and, and for those of you that drive by that on a regular basis, you know, it's, it's been, it's been fascinating to watch that turn from a construction site into an operating facility, and I can tell you from an economic development, business attraction standpoint, that is a great thing for our community. That fact that that is, that facility is, is coming online, that there's hiring of high-level scientists and, and folks that are experts in their field, that's going on right now for that facility, creates national attention. It lets us talk to site selectors, it, it attracts attention to the community. When we talk about Manhattan, people want to know about NBAF, and so it's, that's one that we obviously continue to work closely with them and, and, and follow their, follow their growth. So we talked about jobs, one thing we've, we've really honed in on over the last year is this idea that in order to set the community up for job growth in the future, and economic growth in the future, there are some assets that we need to do some development on. Some of those are outlined in, again, in that community investment piece, many of those, there's, there is an investment or some, a financial component that's needed, but chief among those sites and buildings, when we look, and, and this is not something that is, that is just Manhattan, it's something that, if you read the Lieutenant Governor and Secretary of Commerce Toland's comments yesterday, coming out of the Spark Executive Committee meeting, and, and some of the things they approved, it is something that our entire state, in many ways, is challenged with, and, and that's how do we, how do we have facilities to put companies that want to move to this part of the country, that want to move to Kansas, that want to move to Manhattan, where can we put them? If they're, if they have industrial uses for that facility, we don't have contemporary industrial space that's, that's available right now. If they need greenfield space to build a 100,000 or a 200,000 square foot facility, we're very limited on that right now. And so we created a group within the Economic Development Committee, a Sites and Buildings Task Force, that, that took that on, engaged with regional partners, looked at what properties available out there. One of the key things that came out of that was the Industrial Spec Building Program, which we brought before all of you, working very closely with city staff, and we really appreciate their efforts on that, that particular program, and got approval here a couple of months ago. And I can tell you that that effort is advancing, we just held a meeting this last week where we had a, a lot of key folks from around the community that, that participated to start talking about how that might come together, how we might get local investment into some kind of a project, and ultimately, our role at The Chamber, I think, is gonna be to facilitate that initial conversation and, and help move that effort forward, not something necessarily we're not gonna own, we're not gonna build it, but that need in the future for industrial space to put economic development prospects in. And when we talk industrial space, just keep in mind that, that the areas of high growth are in technology, in animal health, in biosecurity, are almost all manufacturing-based, or light industrial-based, and so those areas that we're good at, that Kansas State churns out incredible expertise in, and a lot of graduates in, and does great research in, oftentimes require industrial space on the commercial side, and so we're pushing that forward. There's also some key committees, task forces, and programs that we've continued to develop. George Cant in our office has done an incredible job of, of moving forward with these efforts, industry roundtables around manufacturing, healthcare. We know that by getting community and regional leaders in specific areas together in the room, not only can they tell us what challenges they're facing, but they can communicate with each other more effectively, and so we're doing that in a number of areas, and anticipate seeing that grow in the coming year. Also finding ways to get our, our senior executives in the community more engaged, and just had an initial steering committee meeting here, a lot of great potential, we've already started talking about connectivity with Spark on the entrepreneurial side of things, and with young, and with hype for our young professionals, so how can we take those with experience, folks that have owned businesses, managed businesses, managed organizations in the community? How can they give back? How can they mentor? How can they provide guidance? How can they provide input and effort into what The Chamber's doing, what associated programs are doing within our organization, with our, our community, and, and so that effort is, is well underway and, and moving forward. One of the big things that we've done over the course of the last year, we told you last year how we responded, as, as COVID kind of kicked off, we, we responded by pushing As, as COVID kind of kicked off, we, we responded by pushing forward on a national, an international marketing campaign focused around why Manhattan, Kansas, and the assets here, NBAF, Kansas State University and others are so vitally important to our national security, to bio-defense, going forward to protection of our food chain and all of those things. And, and that effort was rewarded this year by the International Economic Development Council as we received a, a national award, a silver award for regionalism and cross-border collaboration for that effort, which was done through the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership or GMEP. And so that, that partnership with Potawatomi County Economic Development is, is really paying dividends. It's where we do a lot of our business attraction work. It's where we have some key prospects that are in our pipeline right now that are being worked through that partnership. I do want to highlight some of the numbers. This really has been impressive. We've seen, we've seen very impactful growth in this program over the past year. This started again about mid-2020. If you look at some of the numbers, up to about, over the last six months, up to, up to 10,600 users, so up 162% from the same time period last year, about the same growth in sessions. A lot of the traffic that's going to our Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership website, which is where we direct economic development prospects, is being driven by this marketing campaign. It has a, a online presence, it's social media presence, an email component to it as well. And so we're seeing some very strong, some strong results out of that. You can see where, where are people looking at this campaign from? I'm really positive about that. If you look at the top metro areas, you know, you see Topeka, obviously we have, we send this to all of our partners at the state. They are some of our most important and key economic development partners because working with the Kansas Department of Commerce and other entities at the state level helps develop our pipeline, those relationships do. They're looking at it. Los Angeles, New York, Chicago, the Dallas Metro, all hotbeds of site selectors. Those are the, those are the parts of the country that if you're going and doing site selector events with site selectors and you're, you're working that industry, that's where you're going. And so obviously our targeted efforts to those folks are driving, driving activity. It's also really interesting to look at the types of things that people are looking at. We developed, working with our, our marketing partners, a massive amount of content for this program. I would encourage you to go to greatermanhattan.org sometime, click on the news tab up at the top and just read through the content. I mean, it really is, I think for all of us, we look at that and we go, gosh, that's our, that's our town, that's our region. I didn't know that. Or, or, or you know, that's, it's amazing to think that that expertise or that business or that capability exists right here. And so there's some great content, great mix of both kind of the personal stories, the, the, the interesting stories about people that maybe relocated to Manhattan but didn't plan on staying here but have stayed. There's also technical information in there about NBAF, about research being done at K-State, about things like the K-State Pet Obesity Clinic, things about our, our very own entrepreneurship ecosystem with Spark and Sarah Siders. And so if you look at that top 10 list of content, these are just 10 of, of many, many stories and, and both curated and created content that's been done through this campaign, it is a mix. And you can see some of the, some of the examples here. You know, Twitter is where we see the most, most bang for our buck when it comes to technical information. Facebook has been really strong for those general interests and personal content type of things. It also drives most of our, the, the largest amount of our web traffic. And then LinkedIn has been really good for our local and scientific content. It really resonates. So we start to, you know, highlighting specific people. Commissioner Ready has highlighted there on that particular story. So appreciate you taking part in that. As we highlight people or we highlight folks with certain expertises or those sort of things, research that's being done, that really connects on LinkedIn. So this has been a, a very effective campaign and one that, again, I think we really, a lot of the value is we look at who is looking, who is opening the emails? Who's looking at the, at the content? We're connecting with site selectors. And, and, and that's an important part of being aggressive in our, in our economic development efforts. Next thing on jobs highlights are business retention expansion efforts. And this is small on the screen, the same information is in the, in the report. One of the reasons it's small is I thought it was important to share. This is, this was a massive effort, building a business retention expansion program and a very strong one from the ground up, takes a lot of legwork. And, and again, George Cant in our office has done a phenomenal job there, going out last year in the heart of the pandemic, meeting virtually with, with 54 companies, very few of those in person, putting together a business conditions report. Some of the key themes we saw from that, you know, things about entrepreneur, entrepreneurism, childcare, talent attraction, recruitment, retention, better connection for military veterans and their spouses, things like, things like partnering with educational institutions, things like, you know, housing, technology to enable remote work. These are all things that we've used from talking to our business community to better inform and ultimately drive our efforts. What's good is I think the research and the strategy that went into our economic development plan had much of this in there. I think that's a very positive thing. When we, when we look at the plan we're on and the, and the path we're on is addressing the needs, beginning to address the needs of our, of our community. But every one of those, there are programs and we're actively engaged and you see it in the report and in the information shared tonight on every one of those, every one of those issues identified there. We also heard from those folks that 80% of the, of the businesses that were talked to said that K-State's key to, to future economic stability in our community. Almost 80% said economic diversification. So more, so while K-State's important, they're also saying more private sector growth and in different industries is important to our, to our local economy. So, and, and as at many places right now, you know, nearly three-quarters of folks are saying that talent attraction or retention is a challenge for them. So the good news is that from those 54 companies that were talked to in 2020 that were part of the 2021 Business Conditions Report, 30 plan to expand. That total then, almost 650 new jobs from those 30 businesses and their, their, their expansion efforts. You know, 210,000 square feet of new space and over 100 million in, in capital investment. So, you know, will every last one of those go forward? No, but it's good to know that we have companies here and businesses here that have plans to grow. And once we know that, we're engaging with them. So if it becomes a talent and workforce thing, we're getting them connected in and working with our, with our talent strategy efforts with Made for Manhattan and getting resources in their hands. If it's a sites or a building-related issue where they're going to be, they know they're going to be looking for some space, we're engaging with them at that point to talk about, talk about space and, and try to help them find a solution. So one of the big takeaways for our business retention and expansion effort is just that it's getting us in front of folks, helping both when they have challenges, but also helping engage when they have, when they have opportunity. So in 2021, after, after last year's kickoff of, of this program, continued to grow in 2021 with, with 60 businesses have been visited. George is currently working on updating the business conditions report and we'll have a new one of those in the first quarter of 2022 that, that has the updated information from the companies that were visited this last year that we'll, we'll share with you and provide at that time as well. So. So we keep referencing talent. There's just no way to talk about economic development in, in this community or probably any community right now without talking about talent and workforce. Obviously, it has been stressed significantly by the pandemic and, and, and as, and we continue to see that on a, on a regular basis. I think what's good here is that we have actively engaged and have some programs in place that, that while new, we're able to go out and, and starting to have more and more of an impact. And so chief and key among those is Made for Manhattan. This was an effort that grew out of talking to HR professionals, talking to new residents of the community, better understanding what processes people went through when they came to the community. And then we launched this, this summer at the Leaders Retreat at the end of July. And so want to highlight a couple of key components here. One is a really strong website. So madeformanhattan.org, this is the place you can go. You can, you can read stories and profiles on, on individuals that, that, that choose to live, to work and to play and raise families and engage in this community. You can learn more about demographics and data, if that's something that you're into and you're looking at the community. You can, you can learn more about housing and about neighborhoods and, and about activities and, and things that you can engage in, whether that be schools for your kids or, or social activities or groups that you can engage in. And so it's really meant to be a resource. If you're somebody that's looking at Manhattan, instead of just going to Google and clicking on whatever the first thing that comes up, we knew we needed to have some control over that content. And so Made for Manhattan is doing that. It's given us some control over what people are finding online about Manhattan. It's also a great resource for HR professionals. And ultimately, at the heart of it, those are the people that are directly connected to adding jobs in Manhattan. They're the ones doing the hiring. Whether it's a new company or an existing company, those are the folks that we have to be supporting and this program was designed to do exactly that. There's a relocation booklet, QR codes, other information, something that can be handed out at career fairs, at hiring events, at various different activities. There's postcard boxes, which we've shared with you in the past, that can be utilized by companies to go out and send to a prospective employee when they're really trying to recruit them here. And I think what probably is most important, and I probably talk about least in this program, but, but it may be, is the most important part of it, we have a person, Amber Wilhelm, who many of you have the chance to meet and work with. We have somebody that folks can connect with. So her face and her information, her contact is on the material, it's on the website. If you're looking at a community and you can connect with somebody, that really increases your, the chances that you're going to ask the questions you want to ask. You're not just sending it to a random email address. And so Amber's been incredibly active going out. And, and so Made for Manhattan, there's the, there's the resources side, then there's the activity side. And so we've, we've engaged in career fairs, both in the spring and the fall, across five states, actively tied in right now with Hype and our young professionals. And, and they are part of that, that recruitment and part of that communicating about Manhattan effort. Connecting with Fort Riley, I'm not going to steal Janet's thunder, but she's been doing some great things there with our talent programs and connecting them with folks at Fort Riley. You know, we continue to see growth. Obviously, you all took, took a look at it tonight, but, but projects like Aggieville, like, like North Campus Corridor or The Edge are things that make this really an attractive community for people. And, and those are things that we'll continue to leverage and promote, not just locally, but, but nationally and beyond into the future. And then we see some of the, we see some of the accolades, you know, a top 100 listing on livability this last year. And, and then there's other pieces that are still in the pipeline, right? We've got things like Career Academy Concept, programs like, like Classroom to Career and others that are exist in the region that, that get students involved at a young age and, and connected into the community. And we hope that we can retain more of them here as they graduate from high school or, or they graduate from K-State or MATEC or Manhattan Christian or any number of other places. So. Switch gears a little bit and go into entrepreneurship. Couple of key things I want to touch on here as far as activity over, over the last year. And one is an effort that we really engaged in since the last time we were here to update you. And, and that is this Entrepreneurial Facility Task Force and Report. We presented this at our, at our Advantage Manhattan Investor Meeting this fall. And, and really this came about from looking around the community and understanding a couple of things. One, that there was a, a component of the Region Reimagine Plan that talked about creating a center of gravity in a, in a walkable district with some proximity to the university and that those are the kind of places that entrepreneurs flock to. And those are the kind of places that create the natural connections for folks that are starting businesses and growing. And so he said, well, we need to, we need to better look into what, you know, what potential exists there. And so we brought together a task force representing a number of different community organizations, elected officials, entrepreneurs, most importantly, and entrepreneurial support organizations, engaged somebody that is, is nationally known for their economic development prowess in Matt Tarleton. He was part of the, the group that was involved, the company that was involved with Region Reimagine, or the Manhattan Project that became Region Reimagine. He's worked with the state of Kansas on their, on their, their state economic development strategy framework for growth. And, and so he engaged with our group here in Manhattan and, and we brought him, brought him into the fold on that and ultimately developed a, a report from these efforts and the series of meetings, which really focuses on this idea of a center of gravity located in Aggieville for entrepreneurs. And, and ultimately, the primary functions of that space would be a front door to the entrepreneurial ecosystem, would help with startup incubation, startup acceleration, and ultimately startup activation. So it's a place where people can come, whether they're tire kickers or thinking about an idea and have access to resources. But it's also something that would be very targeted in its, in its programming to be such that we're growing high-wage, high-impact jobs that are net importers of dollars. And, and those kind of things, that those innovation-based entrepreneurs are ones that honestly, we oftentimes, we oftentimes lose before we even know they're here because we haven't necessarily been able to respond to their needs in the past. And we think this is one piece of being able to better respond to them in the future. And there's some really good things going on with Spark and some things going on in the innovation section that Rebecca will talk about later on how we're, how we're better connecting and resourcing those folks. The other piece I want to hit on, on entrepreneurship is the Small Business Development Center. As many of you know, we host the Small Business Development Center office out of the Chamber office in Manhattan. Lori Piper, who had been, been our, our regional, ran this regional office, has recently, within the last several months left actually, for a position with the, with the Economic Development Organization in Topeka. And so, and so she's heading up an effort over there, but we're currently in the process of hiring a new, a new SBDC rep for this office. And, and I think that it's, it's sometimes easy to forget because this office has been here for a long time. But, you know, even just in, in, in 2021, coming out of the pandemic, you know, not being fully staffed for the full year, just the Manhattan office, this isn't including the entirety of, of the Topeka region, just the Manhattan office, served over 300 active clients and, and held over 25 training events for entrepreneurs in, in 2021. So talk about a big bang for your buck when it comes to the investment that we make in the SBDC. That's something that we, we support and will continue to support. So with that, I am going to hand it off to Sarah Siders, the Executive Director of Spark, who, as we've mentioned, there, there are a number of things going on, on the Spark front that, that are really positive. And I think that the partnership that we have with Spark and allowing a lot of our entrepreneurial efforts to grow out of the, out of, out of Spark and, and the people that become involved in the different groups and the programming. And there's just a lot of new things that we've been able to do over the last 18 months working with Spark. And so really positive on that, on that relationship and, and appreciate all of Sarah's efforts. Appreciate the Spark Board for their efforts in, in getting that organization up and off the ground. And then very quickly after that, engaging with the Chamber and, and, and working to build our entrepreneurial ecosystem. So with that, we'll welcome Sarah.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here. Go ahead and remind you who we are and what we do. So we are a nonprofit and our vision is to connect resource and launch the individual entrepreneur one-to-one. And by doing that, we are igniting a dynamic and inclusive culture of entrepreneurship throughout Greater Manhattan. So when we impact one-to-one-to-one, we eventually change that culture. And we're building that, that culture and supporting entrepreneurs by building a community-based hub of networks and connections that support those entrepreneurs, connecting them to resources and programs that they need and connecting them to each other, which is extremely important. So I'm very pleased to update you all on the progress, the impact, the efforts of Spark over the last year. It's been an extraordinary year and we've had obviously a number of challenges, but been able to do some really neat things for our community. So I want to take a quantitative approach here and just share it with you, some of our highlights in terms of data points that can illustrate the impact that we've made. So I'm going to go through these real quick and then we'll talk about what that looks like in real life for a real-life entrepreneur. So this year, we hosted 12 Women in Entrepreneurship events and 13 Entrepreneur Community events. One Million Cups, with which Spark is engaged regularly, was able to support 56 businesses in, in their community. Spark provided over 60 business consultations through Entrepreneur Navigation Services. And that's just something that we've been really focusing on more even in the latter half of the year. And so you can expect to see more significant numbers, but that's just us meeting individually with an entrepreneur, a business owner and getting some basic information about their business and helping them get connected into resources and programming that they need. Our centralized hub of resources that's online, hosted by Startup Space, is a, a place where we have aggregated resources, data and events. And that's been growing over this past year since we launched in May with 224 users. As of like this afternoon, it's 227. I just feel that I should say that because it's actively growing regularly. We were also pleased to announce that our two entrepreneurship education cohorts, which were the first offered in this region for the, the very first time. We had 19 businesses graduate from those, in total, seven from Flint Hills Business Launch and 12 from Entrepreneur Business Basics. Spark has provided promotion through storytelling to 42 Aerie businesses. And in total, our community was able to award $26,500 to upcoming, new and emerging businesses through our two pitch competitions, Startup MHK and the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. So $1,500 awarded there to high school students who recently participated in our, in an annual pitch competition. And that was a really, really exciting event for us. So I want to give you an illustration of what it looks like when Spark is doing the work that we were designed to do. And I want to tell the story of a young professional and entrepreneur whose name is Naja Threet. And be prepared to hear her name more often because she is an up-and-coming leader here. So in April, I'm a part of the Hype Steering Committee with a role that I play with the Community Foundation. And so I was hosting an event and I met Naja at this Hype event. And I found out, as I often do, that people are wanting to start a business. This is a conversation I find myself in all the time and Naja was no exception. This is a conversation I find myself in all the time and Nisha was no exception. She wanted to start a business. And I said, well, you're in luck, Nisha, because we are having, we are hosting an information session for Entrepreneur Business Basics, which is the first entrepreneur education cohort that we've ever offered here. And that is next week. So she came and she signed up for the class and she attended the class and she graduated. And in so doing, she also signed up for the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, which with which she is an active member. Since graduating from Entrepreneur Business Basics, she has been very active in launching her her new business, Nest Development. Some of you have already heard from her about this. In October, she pitched at Startup M H K and she did very well. She was the second runner up in that in that pitch competition. She's also taken a role as an emcee and host along with me with the Women in Entrepreneurship Community Events. And next year, she will be the Chair-elect for Hype, our Young Professionals Group. So you can see how she has connected in with Spark and she's been able to plug into a network of community organizations, people and support. And here's what she had to say about starting her business in Manhattan. She said, through Spark and their programs, I've been able to get candid feedback that has helped me stay grounded and focused towards my business goals. The Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills have created a safe space for me. Statistically, Manhattan is a diverse community, but not visibly so. Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills keeps me connected and encouraged as it relates to the black experience in Manhattan. Hype is another Manhattan-based organization that I've been able to connect and grow with. The connections I've made via Hype are vital to my longevity in the Manhattan community. Spark, Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills and Hype all have different missions, yet they are key organizations to my success in Manhattan. And so as you can see, her connections that that Spark in part were able to create. And then she was creating her own connections, as you can see. But that's the idea is that when Spark is focused is is working as a hub and working as a doorway into that network of relationships and programs and resources. Someone can walk through our door and find themselves connected to everything that they need in order to be successful in their career as a young professional even, and especially as an entrepreneur and business owner. And so we were were very excited for Nisha's story. And to be honest, I have many of these stories. So if you want to grab coffee sometime and hear about them, I've been very pleased to see that Spark is in fact doing our job connecting entrepreneurs to that network of resources and helping them to feel supported and know that our greater Manhattan community is behind them. So minority business development has been a focus for Spark in this first year. This was a part of our Chamber contract, helping to build infrastructure for the minority business community. And so in March of this year, Spark officially partnered with the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills with a partnership that was sponsored by Kansas Gas Service. And that partnership centered around four shared priorities that benefit not only the the members of the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, but but all entrepreneurs of color, as we're building around four shared priorities, which are inclusive capital opportunities, inclusive education and resources, intentional efforts to address challenges, and increased visibility and opportunities for minority businesses. And so as you can see there on the slide, there's a timeline of the things that we've been able to do together. And I want to give credit where credit's due because, you know, the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, this is a volunteer run and led organization that has hustled significantly to build the partnerships and have the impact that they've had. And we've been honored to be a part of their journey and to support them. But they have done some incredible things. So after launching that that partnership officially in March, we added LaFerris-Brisby, one of their at-large members, to our Spark Board. And in June, we launched Entrepreneur Business Basics, which is a 12-week education cohort focused on the opportunities and challenges that are unique to entrepreneurs of color. And we were able to pilot that program and graduated 12 businesses in August. At the same time, at just like a couple of days apart, actually, there was the first ever Black Business Showcase, which was held at the Fellow with 20 businesses participating. In September, the Minority Business Directory was launched in partnership with the Chamber, which was very exciting. And then in November, the Black Business Friday in partnership with Manhattan Town Center. And I want to also throw in there, which is not on the timeline, which is extremely important. At Startup M H K this year, all three awarded businesses were all members of the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, too, had gone through Entrepreneur Business Basics and were uniquely prepared for pitch because of that program, which focuses a lot on pitch. And so we have so much to be proud of with our partnership with Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills and the the ability to expand infrastructure and opportunity for entrepreneurs of color in our region. And I'm very excited about everything that we've achieved in that area and identified a lot of other things that we can do together. So we're going to be strategic about that partnership and invite even more people into that conversation as we go into 2022. So looking ahead, you can expect to hear more from us. A year from now, when I'm standing up here, you're going to hear things about how we've activated the virtual hub and how we've made it more useful to its members by helping people to access the member directory. Here's how I describe the virtual hub in in terms of what it's supposed to do. And if you haven't been to our website or if you haven't signed up for our virtual hub, I highly recommend it. But you can go to sparkmhk.com and scroll down just a just a tiny bit below the video. And you can say click on Join Sparks Hub. That's going to give you access to our dashboard, our directory. And essentially, it functions like a micro LinkedIn for our entrepreneurship ecosystem. So it has resources, events, it has a social media aspect to it where there's story sharing or posts. But it also has, again, the the resources and events that we've aggregated over the last year. And it functions as a CRM tool. So we can sit down with that entrepreneur and gather their economic impact data on their business as they grow. And we can track all of that in the same platform. So it's really, really an excellent tool for us and we would love to have you onboard. It's not just for entrepreneurs, it's for anyone who's participating in that entrepreneur ecosystem. So look for more direction towards that hub and more activation there, as well as minority and women entrepreneur programming. We'll continue to expand that. You'll also see opportunities for innovation and tech founders to network and connect. Mentorship programming, as Darren mentioned, in partnership with the Chamber and other partners in the community. And we are finalizing our Entrepreneur Pathway and Resource Guide, which is is kind of just a visual map for all the resources that we have at every business stage with for every business need. And so that is something that allows us to see what we have and also to see our gaps and continue to collaborate to fill those gaps. So we have had an incredible year. We are very, very pleased with what we've done. And I am looking forward to being able to report even more impact and even more data points on the on the impact of entrepreneurs here locally. So I'm going to hand it over to Rebecca Robinson, who's going to talk more with us about innovation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As Sarah noted, I'm Rebecca Robinson. I serve as the Chief Corporate Engagement and Economic Development Officer at K-State Innovation Partners. And in this role, as the Director of our Knowledge-Based Economic Development, our K-Bed Partnership, our University Community Economic Development Partnership. Tonight, I have the pleasure of telling you a little bit about the progress we've made on some of our innovation based strategies. Most of these strategies are focused on leveraging the university and our other innovation assets like NBAF, our Technical College, and other private sector partners in order to both drive innovation in our community, diversify our economy through the attraction of new companies, as well as leverage the investments that the community has made, particularly around the K-State campus, in order to drive that economic vitality and prosperity. Just earlier this month, as Darren noted, the university unveiled its new economic prosperity plan. This was initiated through a process by the Kansas Board of Regents through their the economic prosperity pillar of their new strategic plan. This bold plan will support the creation, as you can see here, of 3,000 jobs and $3 billion of investment over the next 10 years by focusing on these four key strategic areas of K-State's strengths. Food and agriculture systems innovation, digital agriculture and advanced analytics, biosecurity and biodefense, and K-State 105, which focuses on rural entrepreneurship and innovation across the state. This kind of commitment is unique in higher education in the world and is something I think that we can all be excited about as K-State is is planning to support economic prosperity in Kansas. Of note, our two new key leadership hires that K-State has announced and made in the last six, eight months. First is Dr. David Rozowski was named our new Vice President for Research. And most recently, Dr. Richard Linton was named our next university president. Both of these key leadership hires have highlighted our economic prosperity plan as an important part of our future. And and both are enthusiastic for our partnership with the community. In terms of highlights of things that we have accomplished over the last year, we've continued to make tremendous slides in terms of leveraging the university's research portfolio to drive corporate partnerships. A couple that I would note, one is Alanco Animal Health. This partnership is a strategic alliance that the university just announced. Alanco is one of the top five animal health companies in the world. And this partnership will advance animal health research and talent development in this core space that K-State has strategic strength in. The other is Tonics Pharmaceuticals. This partnership is a licensing and research partnership focused on research and development of a novel COVID-19 vaccine candidate. Over the last year, in addition to those two partnerships, the university and the K-State Foundation have been working on rebranding the North Campus Corridor into the Edge Collaboration District in order to be able to better communicate to the world about what will happen in the in the north part of our campus. This leverages the strategic investments that the community has made in that district and will work and will help to attract new companies to feed all of those innovation strategies that we discussed. Finally, the last item on this highlight slide is now a building that is actually taking shape in the K-State Research Park. This, the Stormont Vale and K-State Strategic Partnership was announced in late 2020. Stormont Vale is actually in the process, as you can see, coming up out of the ground, a 55,000 square foot clinic that will be completed next year. That facility will support talent, healthcare talent pipelines to build that that critical physician's assistant talent pipeline in the region. Just to wrap up some of our innovation highlights, one of the things that we have seen this year is probably the most leads, economic development leads that I have seen in my time in Manhattan in my career. In terms of of innovation based companies, part of that is due to the fact that we enlisted some very new strategies in trying to drive that pipeline. The first is a partnership with Plug and Play. Plug and Play is a national venture capitalist firm that has developed these accelerator programs across the country and have developed this one in Topeka that's focused on animal health and ag tech. There, they have sent cohorts, multiple cohorts of startup companies through that program. And we have become a strategic partner to to that Plug and Play Accelerator Program to where we are a resource for those startup companies. Through that, we've got, we've been introduced to all of the cohort companies that have gone through and are now in active discussions with many of those about having a physical presence in our region. The assets at Kansas State University, the talent pipelines coming out of this community are of of great importance and benefit to those companies. The second is a similar partnership with the Beef Alliance. The Beef Alliance is a consortium of some of the the nation's largest cattle feeders. They're actually headquartered here in Manhattan. They also have a tremendous amount of innovation that drives their work. And so this last year, they hosted the first ever Beef Alliance Startup Challenge. Through that program, we actually connected with them and they introduced us to all of the startup companies that went through their initial startup challenge. So we were introduced to almost 30 new startup companies and 10 of them expressed interest in connecting with us. Now we are in active discussions with a couple of those companies to locate in this community. Again, leveraging those resources at Kansas State University. All of these meetings are not K-State meetings necessarily. They are meetings with the Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber. This is a team-led effort when we're talking to any of these companies to bring all of the resources of the community and the university to bear in terms of building those partnerships. The last lead generation activity I would highlight for you is an effort that was launched by the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership in early 2021. They actually engaged with an organization called R O Y to engage in lead generation services. This company is a known lead generator organization, very professional across the country. And they reached out to targeted companies in these areas that that we have agreed with as a community to focus on over that time period. So agriculture, animal health, biosecurity, biodefense, crop science. They reached out to over 300 companies across the world and secured 11 meetings with our team to have those similar conversations about really what what they could do to benefit by having a presence in this region. And our team continues to advance those conversations. So as you can see, that has built a tremendous pipeline and opportunity for companies truly around the world to hear about Manhattan and K-State. And those those efforts are proving to be fruitful. Last but not least, we were pleased to announce the creation of Canopy, which is a new company that has spun out of the university. This company was a company that was actually created inside the institution. They created a new software platform to support the SNAP ed reporting for the federal government. Our shop licensed that software platform to 37 states across the country before the USDA decided that they would make it the national reporting software, resulting in a large contract for that for that unit. In order to support the growth of that activity, it made sense to spin them out of the institution, creating initially 12 new private sector jobs. And as you have seen before, will will ramp up very quickly in terms of new jobs in order to support this contract and others. So with that, I thank you for being here tonight. I will transition over to Kent Glasscock to close. Thank you.
Mayor and Members of the Commission, I'm Kent Glasscock, CEO of Kansas State University's Innovation Partners. And as you can tell, I'm not very good at technology. But I'm delighted to be with you and I couldn't be more excited. What you've seen, presented to you over the course of the last 35 or 40 minutes, truly is a bold plan. It is a plan that I think is built for the next decade. The time between the Great Recession and 2019 in this community was not the world's best time in terms of creating jobs. We had essentially flat job creation. And that was bad. Then the pandemic occurred and that made it even worse. But this plan has a strong foundation. It has goals that are measurable. It has, as you can tell from the presentations, a complicated, significant series of strategies that are built to create jobs and to create prosperity in this community. This plan was enhanced, I think, two or three weeks ago when President Myers and Provost Tabor and our new Vice President for Research Rozowski announced the K-State Possibilities Economic Prosperity Plan. 3,000 jobs, $3 billion in direct investment in the state of Kansas between 2019 and 2030. This is an integrated plan. It's programming, it's catalyst investments. And you took action this evening earlier on two of those catalyst investments, Aggieville and the North Campus Corridor. And Ron, you mentioned investments, Aggieville and the North Campus Corridor. And Ron, you mentioned the the City University Sales Tax as a contributor to the North Campus Corridor, $10 million, I think it is. And I have with me a member of my board, I won't genuflect, but Sue Peterson, Dr. Sue Peterson. And I can tell you that that $10 million from the City University Fund was spearheaded and led on campus by Sue Peterson. And I've told her this and I will tell you this, that without her leadership, that would not have gotten done. This is an integrated plan. This is a community plan. This is a university plan and it's built on a foundation of partnerships that work. Darren, Jason, Rebecca, Sarah noted those partnerships. The City, the Chamber, Kansas State University, Greater Economic Development Partnership, the state of Kansas. These are partners that work according to and align plan. And that is something very unusual, very unusual. It's unusual, as Rebecca said, for a university to care at all about economic development, let alone to create such audacious, audacious goals. So what is our ultimate goal? Well, in my view, our ultimate goal is to create a community of promise and prosperity and diversity. Those who know me know I talk a lot about Manhattan needs to use 100% of its talent pool. If we use just that part of the talent pool that looks like me, look like you, when? You, Mark, you're too young, Aaron. But if we depend on those who look like us, we will have a diminished future. Manhattan, in order to prosper and be full of opportunity, has to resemble and engage the world. This plan and K-State's plan does exactly that. I was sitting there and thinking, Ron, next month, it marks the 35th anniversary of my being seated as a Manhattan City Commissioner. And I said, look back on those 35 years. Those are years full of tremendous success and accomplishment in this community. Downtown One, Downtown Two, all of the foreign lane highways were on, you know, some of them are in need of repair perhaps. But those were significant endeavors based upon a partnership. MBAF, there wasn't a person in the world, other than those at K-State and Manhattan, that thought MBAF could ever be located here. It was kind of a joke in Texas. Well, it's not a joke now. And I can tell you that in my 35 years engaged in economic development, I've never seen more opportunity. And yes, the 67 jobs doesn't look like a lot of jobs. But I can tell you this, from K-State's perspective, we have never had more economic opportunity and partnerships and attraction of companies than we have right now. We are just warming up. Thank you for your partnership. Thank you for being part of this plan. Together, we are on our way. Mayor, I think everybody but me is ready to stand for questions.
Okay. Does the commission have any questions before we do public comment?
No questions. I have a comment, but I can go after public comment.
Okay. Do there any public comment on the presentation? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners?
I just wanted to, one, point out a couple of years ago, I think, well, while campaigning, I guess, talking about what it might look like to grow our own people, our own talent. And then we had a pandemic, which made that harder. But with Spark and the different efforts, I did get to participate in that startup MHK and see the pitches and the talent there. And it, the the difference between two years ago or four years ago, when I was talking to young people and historically underrepresented, you know, populations that want to get involved and plug it plugged into to start a business, there was always some defeat behind those. You could tell that they weren't sure how to get plugged in or where, who, is this possible? Where do I go? But what's different from a few months ago, after that competition, I noticed those same types of individuals were, even as Nisha was a runner-up, she wasn't defeated. She was resilient and turning to her coach, Frisbee, about how to do better next time and get that foundation. So I think it's not just the foundation of a plan for the community, but individualized growing our own and building up that foundation around the talent that already is here. And I really appreciate that coming together. And I just, I wanted, wanted to recognize that. I think even, I think Spark is kind of sent one of the IT people that is Pete, a service-connected disabled veteran. So it's not just minority populations, but helping veteran-owned businesses get started up and going. And I think that's, that's been a big difference, a big impact I can see from this vantage point.
Thank you. I have three areas of questions. One, the the Career Academy that Lincoln had is, is that like a building where people go and hang out? Is it just a, is it a process, a program? Is it what? Just give me the 10,000-foot view of the overall of kind of what what that is.
All of the above. It is a building. And some of you were on the, on the trip up that direction a couple of years ago, got to see that. It is a building. It is, it is a pro, multiple programs that engage both with the school district, with area technical and technical schools. And so they're able to provide that, that training and those educational resources and then also the connectivity into the private sector for opportunity. So jobs, where, you know, where do you take that training and go work? And how do you keep those people in the community or elevate folks into a position where they can, you know, where they can, they can have good opportunity? So obviously, they're working very closely in that case through the high schools and through the, through the school districts to do that with that particular population. But yes, it's all of those components. And I would envision, again, something, I'm not, you know, so many of these things we work on with partners, but I know, as is noted in the report under that section, that conversation, they continue to advance that. The school district is involved, MATC is involved. There's representatives from the private sector in the community involved. And, you know, what that end piece ends up looking like, whether it's one location spread across the community and all the programs not yet finalized, but but ultimately, I think our goal would, and the folks that are involved's goal would be the same. And that's to, that's to deploy those programs across the community.
Okay. The 99 million for the aggregate catalyst investment, would you guess you have 5 million of that target or identified? Or how, any ideas where there's a plan for that?
Yeah, I think each one of those sections, and I'm not, not to, not to belabor it, but you'll note that we talk about the need for land and business parks. Obviously, there's some, some word that came down from the state just yesterday that they're going to be targeting some of the Spark dollars to support those kind of asset development projects within the state. So the anticipation would be that hopefully leverage some of those types of resources to do that in the future. You know, the speculative industrial building start, began that process in the private sector to push forward and say that money may come from the, you know, whether it's an investment group or a developer or some mix to do that type of project. The North Campus Corridor, we've covered some tonight. The airport runway, Janet talked about that, but the, you know, that's, that's 1.5 million has already been, you know, has already been secured since this was initially, initially published. There's work being done with K-State, Innovation Lab Concepts, again, the Career Academy, the entrepreneurship, the startup funds. We're actively talking about what does that full spectrum of resourcing entrepreneurs, startups to early stage, you know, and the different business types? What about your Main Street business, your retail, your local service provider versus your high-growth potential innovation graduate student coming out of K-State that has great career opportunity and make a lot of money? But how do you support someone like that when they choose to become an entrepreneur? Right? And so, and so that spectrum, and again, that's why we've got great partners. And working with K-State, we just had a call last Friday, gets me excited. Sound reasonably excited? Okay, good. Gets me excited about that because I think we've got, we've got a huge opportunity there to to better engage that. So again, we keep going down that list, but I think that that, you know, there is definitely more, there is a, there is a significant chunk of that that is, is in the pipeline or secured. And then there are other components, you know, take the Career Academy concept as one, that, that, you know, there's going to be some, there's going to be some hard work yet left to figure out where that money's coming from.
Okay. Is it coincidence that the, that the garage entrepreneurial thing, is there a talk of putting that in the parking garage in Aggieville? Is that why it's called The Garage? Or is that just a coincidence?
No, that was, that was definitely something that was considered and something that ultimately, with that name being one that, that through the process was, was thrown out there and yes, ties into the idea that, that there's the potential for space there that maybe is, you know, public space wouldn't, this would be a use, maybe it's not competitive against or with some other uses in the district. But obviously, that's a conversation that would have to be advanced further and there'd be, you know, this got us, this got us a long way forward from where we were conceptually and better understanding what our community needs and what our entrepreneurs need. That needs to be then paired up with what the, what we can support as a, as a district, as a, as a, as a business community and as a community to, to provide the actual, and develop the actual space wherever that may end up.
So we'll hear more about that, mostly.
I believe we will.
Third thing, and I'm going to keep beating on this until somebody actually takes me serious. The, this whole childcare thing, obviously, the, the cheapest and most effective way to get more childcare is mom and pop in, in home, we'll call it in-home daycare. And I swear that if I wasn't, if I was a cynic, I would say it's the government's trying to drive those out of business by more restrictive things all the time so they can make the case that the government should step in and provide childcare, which, looking at the old place on Kimball, College Hill, that thing tripled or quadrupled in size to justify more preschool-type stuff because the private sector can't provide it because they're too easy being driven out of business by the government. So as, at some point during your childcare task force, talk to some in-house childcare people who will tell you half a dozen names of people who quit in-house childcare because of regulations and other stuff and figure out some way to fix that. And that will be the easiest, cheapest and best long-term solution to childcare because otherwise, it's going to keep going up in costs and it's going to keep being taxpayer-funded and it's just not going to be a solution. The best solution is the easiest solution, which is put the kids with the neighbor or someplace close by. It's the least expensive and it should be the easiest to generate more quickly if you make it easier. And that's where the state's going to have to be involved and just call off the dogs on the inspectors and let people, you know, do their jobs and provide that care. So I'm done.
And we have engaged both at the county level and at the state level, the folks that are involved in regulatory in that group have also engaged at-home providers, center providers, and had actual meetings with just providers in the room to discuss some of those, some of those challenges. And be frank, I mean, it's, it is a, right, it's a small business. And I think that's one of the biggest takeaways we've heard from providers, whether they be in-home or, or center providers, is that, is that there is a level of professionalism that we as a community and as a business community can bring to childcare. It's not daycare. No one's taking care of the day. They're taking care of children. It's childcare. And so that's something that I think we've heard loud and clear. And I think that's a, that is a first step to the point about regulatory. I think that there's a couple, couple of things to unpack there. One is, yes, that, that comes through loud and clear that those are challenges. The challenge many times is associated with a cost. And if there is not a change that is made, is there a potential for addressing some of the cost? And, and there are communities that have developed programs, I think we'll be reporting out at the leaders retreat on some of the direction that that group, that they're, that they're going in at that point, kind of a midway. They have made a commitment, and I really give a lot of credit to the folks that have been involved in starting that group. They've made a commitment that this isn't just an ongoing, we're going to meet and talk about childcare into the future. This is a, we're going to go to the middle of 2022 and at that point, we're coming forward with some recommendations and, and some things that are going to, that we want to push forward into a more, into a more public sphere. And so those kind of programs that help address the cost associated with the regulation or regulatory components, address maybe ways to, ways to impact decisions on the regulatory component and then, and then also things to better, no different than we do with entrepreneurs and working through Spark, things to resource, to educate, to make, make those folks better business owners and to, and to elevate the, the professionalism in what they do within the community are all important things that I think we'll see, we'll see come out of that group.
Well, yeah, even our, our new church's early learning center place out there, the building was designed to, to size the classrooms so the most amount of kids with the fewest number of teachers ratio, keep all that so that it'd be as, as cost-effective as possible. We tried to do everything right and they're, they're not paying rent, they're not paying utilities and they're still, are barely breaking even. I don't know how any private sector place or any place can, can survive and stay in business with, with the way that things have to, have to be run between, yeah, with ratios and everything like that. So you guys got your work cut out for you because it's a, I don't see the solution. We thought we were going to have the solution out there. It's like we could maximize all the profitability, but between turnover of staff and various things along that line, it's just, it's almost impossible. I don't know how other centers, if they're not totally subsidized by churches or some sugar daddy, I don't know how they have them, any of them actually stay open.
Thank you. That's really good input. That is a very important topic. Very important.
Commissioner, I think all of the points that were made this evening were extremely important. I think we, I don't know how badly the pandemic impacted in 2020 and in 2021. I know there, not everybody came back into the workforce. And if they did, they may have come back in another capacity, more remote as opposed to in-person. And that remote may, might even be out of state, but still have a job in Manhattan. So I think those are some questions I have. And I have a few questions here, all over the place in a way. So I ask for your patience during that time. I think the funds that are going to be distributed by the state will be extremely important on how we utilize them. In the past, when we talk about the past previous decade, there wasn't really a Department of Commerce. There wasn't much investment. There really wasn't a Secretary of Commerce to implement like we have in David Tolan. And I think under that leadership, their priority and I think top 10 goals have been get as many jobs in Kansas and as fast as possible and remove as many barriers as possible. So I think that's been very positive, not only for Manhattan, but for the entire state of Kansas. Because you can always see those numbers as they keep posting and they're extremely hands-on. And I think that's benefited Manhattan.
I would agree. We work very closely with them and they are, they are extremely good partners.
Right. And the relationship is very easy and they're very accessible and they respond quickly to emails as well. So I appreciated that as well as working with our own Chamber and our tri-county or Flint Hills region area as well. So here are my questions for you. I think Spark has done an outstanding job. I think that's where a lot of the emphasis has needed to be, trying to build those support systems, the connections, the relationships. And I was talking to Jack Olston just at the mayor's reception this evening and he said something about the EBB in Manhattan being certified. I didn't know what that was, an entrepreneurship business basic in Manhattan being certified. So those are all points to progress, to help our startups, small businesses, people, units that might not have the capacity to build and move forward with mentorship programs. I looked at the slide that has the economic indicators with the employment on it and it had Manhattan October in 2020 at 45,012 and then the net goal of September 2021 to October 2021 as 424 jobs. I mean, we lost 584 and we got back 424. Is that how I'm supposed to read that? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I don't have it in front of me, but I can go back to that slide. That's correct. Yeah, it shows year, that shows year over year and then it shows change from previous month to current month. So, yeah. And there is some, when you start looking at the month over month, there's definitely some seasonality there. Obviously, we, we tend to, we tend to peak out about this time of year, right before the holidays and while, while school's in session, November, December, and then it falls off into the beginning of the year. And, and we build back up in the spring and have a bit of a lull or can carry through the summer, some seasonal work there and then, and then peak again in the fall is our typical, typical employment cycle.
So we're at about 44,000. Is that what you say by October compared to 45 in October? So we're at about 44,000. Is that what you say by October compared to 45 in October of 2020? So we, we lost a few. So even if the, we get the 67, which are not completely there, most of them won't start for another year or two. So we're not at 67 that's projected. So we will still be working in a little bit of the negative numbers. But I'm hoping the investments and everything you're doing helps that process. When we say Manhattan has been stagnant for the past decade, I always get very defensive. Because I see Civics Plus and, and Continental Mills, I saw the NBAF, all of this coming. And then when somebody says it's been stagnant, I feel somehow maybe we weren't working hard enough, when I feel like we were working extremely hard. So I, I do feel there was growth during that period. And it's had an impact on our revenue and jobs in Manhattan. But we want to get beyond that and more as we look forward. So in addition to these jobs, when you talk about companies that you are showing Manhattan to, what are they saying? What is it we're missing? Why don't we have another Civic Plus coming here? What is it that they're looking for? What more can we do that we didn't do last decade? Because it seems like we're doing everything possible and we're not making that final play to get them here.
There is, there is definitely a component there that is, that is asset related as far as sites and buildings go. That's why we tackled that issue this last year with a lot of leadership from Mark Bechamp as our, as our chamber board chair. You know, at the end of the day, many of these projects, when, if I talk to someone that's actively engaged in a project, whether it be from the company or from a site selector standpoint, they're not talking about coming to a greenfield site and building a building and occupying it in 18 or 24 months. They want to be in in, in three to six months and, and equipment in soon after and, and producing. Or, or if it's a, or if it's, you know, some type of customer care or call center type of thing, it's a, those timelines just aren't there. It doesn't matter if they're looking specifically at us or if they're looking elsewhere. They're looking for short timelines and, and getting in. And so that's where we have some challenges when it comes to, when it comes to that. We can attract their attention sometimes. And we've got multiple examples of that over the last couple of years. We attract their attention. We have, have a conversation, maybe even get them to look, but, but ultimately can't, can't meet a timeline. I do think that we've got some great assets when it comes to the university and Fort Riley from a talent pipeline standpoint, and people pay attention to that. And I do think back to your point about commerce, I just think that as a whole, not only are, you know, and, and, and much of this, I, you know, I give all of you credit because I think about almost exactly two years ago, our organization came before you and, and asked for an increase in economic development investment. And, and, you know, let's think about that. A part of that was to be able to go out and more effectively market, market the community, some of the things Rebecca was talking about. You know, we're in projects now that we weren't in previously simply because we, we, we present better. But that's an investment and it takes, you know, it takes resources to do that. And so I think we're making significant progress on that front. Just like the state is making significant progress with their, with their pipeline development and, and the, the efforts at Commerce. And not only are they great partners, but we see tangible, real prospects out of Commerce. And that's a, and that's a, you know, that's a strong thing we participate with. And that's not just outside companies. Just was in a meeting yesterday with, with Commerce representatives with a local company, you know, that's looking to grow and, and make a capital investment in a new facility and add employees. And it's high tech and it's, it's really, you know, it's, it's really a strong company that we need to make sure grows here and doesn't, doesn't end up looking elsewhere. And so I think those are the things that again, it's, 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 it's hard to pinpoint one thing. There are companies that, especially with, with industrial warehousing, distribution, any of those kinds of needs. Again, when I say industrial, I could be talking very high-tech clean room manufacturing. But we, we just, we don't have the assets right now to respond in timelines that are needed for those. Even when we can't attract them with, with workforce and with, and with other, other strengths that we have. And so that being said, I, I agree with, with Rebecca. I mean, our, you know, this is the challenge in, in economic development sometimes. I, I feel incredibly positive about our pipeline. I really do. We have some, we have some companies, we're talking to more companies. We have, we have more companies further down the road than we have in, in recent history. And I really do think we're going to see some strong successes come out of that. Then we will come forward with you soon and we can change that narrative. We can say, you know, that, that was an issue that Manhattan had. We were doing the things to address it and, and here's the tangible, here's the tangible result or the tangible impact of that. But yes, I think that that, that is something that, that it's a number of factors that play in, into that. But, but I do believe that we're addressing all of the major ones right now with these efforts.
Yeah, I think, I feel like we're already in the negatives with the jobs because of what was just with the numbers that I've been given this evening. I feel like we are not 57, 67 in. We are a little behind even that because of the numbers that I'm seeing and I don't want to restate all of that. So when we say project 500 jobs by 2025 or 3,000, I don't know if that's for the state of Kansas, how that looks. So I, I just want to go with caution because we, we are, you're asking for, you know, close to half a million dollars or more than half a million dollars. And before it was 183,000 some odd. So I want to see the return on investment for those. I, I understand the marketing and all of the talent is being utilized very well. I am not questioning that one bit. But the results as far as jobs are not here. And when we talk about canopy, let's say, when you say, okay, they have, you know, so many so odd jobs, are they in Manhattan or are they in another state? Are they living here because?
And any job that we're reporting in that list is going to be a net new job. So, and, and from economic development efforts. So it's going to be a company that we directly engage with. And it's going to be net new jobs to the community. And it's going to be jobs located here. So, and that, and again, you know, that's one of those things where we're not just, we, we have a larger list. That is that, you know, when you look at those hundred and some odd companies that we've engaged with, obviously there's a, there's a long list of companies that, that the university and university partners like, like, like innovation partners have engaged with over the years. We survey those folks, we talk to them, we visit them, we interview them on a regular basis. There is just some of those we've seen drops over the last couple of years. We've seen others grow. But when it comes to the piece that we report, I think that's one thing we do have to be very careful of when it comes to economic development efforts is, is we will report, again, those jobs that, that result from economic development efforts that are net new jobs to the community and that are located here. And so it does provide a relatively narrow snapshot. But it's, it is also the traditionally the, the accepted and most professional way to report economic development jobs. So to, to the larger point too, it's one of the reasons why growing primary jobs in the private sector is so important to our community. Because it does help us with some of that seasonal ebb and flow and, and larger macroeconomic factors that lead to, that lead to, lead to some of those drops when you, when you have a, you know, when you have a significant amount of your private sector workforce that's, that's in service. And, and there's nothing wrong with that. It's just that if we grow some of those primary jobs, we have more stability there. And so I think that's where I completely understand that point because we look at those numbers and, and it is challenging. It's challenging when you look at our peers and see us lagging a percentage point or two behind oftentimes. And so that point is very much taken. And, and those are definitely numbers that we're, we're looking at them the minute they come out every single month from the state and, and from surrounding states and peer communities. And it's something we pay very close attention to.
Yeah, I think, and it's so important for me that we get new jobs that are located here in Manhattan mainly because we still have to provide the same services for everybody. And oftentimes you hear about property taxes. And when people live in another state and working here, that's great. We're providing a job. But it's, I don't know how you would break that into all of this. So maybe that's for another time. But I just, I just want to make sure we, we have a path forward to the 500 that's been, being indicated. I do have a question, whether it's for Rebecca or for Kent, or maybe even it's for you. On the slide, it had, on Innovation Highlights, K-State Economic Prosperity Plan launch. And it had the baseline jobs and the tenure projection. I wanted to know what those baseline 219 direct FTE jobs, it says 587. What is that number from? Is that from the state of Kansas? Is that from the university? What, what is that? Where, where is that baseline 587 from?
Commissioner, that, that is a baseline of the jobs connected to Kansas State University Innovation Partners efforts. From, I think from 2000, I don't know, the 587, what period of time was that? So, so probably eight, eight or 10 years ago. I can't remember what. So that becomes the baseline in, in 2019 and then we count from there.
Okay.
And, and I would, and I would just mention on your earlier point, the distinction I think now is as opposed to the last 10 years. Keep in mind, we did the Greater Manhattan Project. We did Region Reimagine. These are building blocks. We created this unified economic development strategy. Kansas State University decided to be all in on economic development. The, the, the entire landscape has changed, all for the better.
Right. No, I'm not questioning that. I just have questions for what we are projecting.
Yes.
I think we have the infrastructure in place. That's why we're doing the Edge and the North Campus Corridor and the Wi-Fi and Aggieville and downtown. We have the infrastructure in place. Now we need the jobs, the people to come in. So that's, that's what I'm looking at because we've invested as much as we can in all of our pockets, city, university, whatever you want to look at, putting it all in there. So that, that's where my angst comes from.
I understand.
To see where we're building it. So the 587 is from jobs, from Kansas State University, from talent?
Relate, um, um, company acquisition, business startup and the like.
Okay.
New business formation. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they're all private sector jobs.
All right. Okay. That's it. Thank you. I, I sense an energy in the room and I'm glad to sense that, that that's what's going on. I too am pleased with the opportunities that the State Department of Commerce brings to us. And the, those are tremendous and a new message for all of us. And it brings us out of a depression about what's possible. I am anxious and I appreciate seeing that housing and childcare are part of your, what, what you're going to be working on. And that childcare is coming probably by mid-year, it sounds like. And that's encouraging. We've been working on childcare, it seems to me, for a long time. And we've not really put the hard work into it. And it sounds like you're doing that now. So that's hard because you talk about the money, you talk about the labor force, but we also need quality childcare. That is not dangerous for the child. And sometimes you can, some of the home-based childcare are where some of the abuses have taken place. And so that's why we have these rules, you know, for, to safeguard children. And how, how do you argue with that in the scheme of things? I'm anxious to get started as we work on our housing. Analysis is what we're doing. But at some point we have to start the hard work on that also. And for affordability. And that's certainly what I am anxious to see. I am interested in remote working, like I'd be interested. I know that the federal government has allowed a lot of remote working over the last two years. And so I'd be interested in how many NBAF employees are really remote versus how many are really here. And I, it's probably a changing dynamic as they've added staff. But I also think it's kind of like K-State has brought all their employees back from remote. And now it's on an individual basis if you work remote. But I have a feeling that the federal government is also, well, was. I don't know with this new variant, whether we're going to see much movement there. I don't know. It's hard to know. I'm curious about local governments. You have a feature in here about local governments working together. And I, I feel like the city has brought money to the table consistently, year after year. And so can you tell me what you would envision for, by making that one of your key features?
Yeah, and you're referencing the information that came out of the business conditions report, correct? And so that's obviously something that, if it came, coming out of the business conditions report, that's an item that was reflected to us by business owners and managers across the community. So, you know, as a snapshot of, of, of business leaders in the private sector, they're saying that's something that they would like to see. And I believe there's, there's twofold there as I've talked to folks. One is, one is that as, as our region grows, we, and, and you all have to deal with on a regular basis, we have a lot of cross-jurisdiction and multi-jurisdictional issues where we're not able to make decisions or, or create opportunities simply in a, in a bubble. And most of our economic development prospects are that way. I, I did a, a, what, what potentially is a final, Rebecca and I worked on this today, what's potentially a final proposal for a, for an economic development prospect we've engaged with for quite a while that, that would have presence in, in, you know, in, in Manhattan and in multiple counties. And there would be a number of things that would have to go on to, to ultimately make that all work. And so I think that that's one component, that there's the, the inter-governmental component or the cross or multi-jurisdictional component. And then the other piece is, as we oftentimes hear from the business community is what can we do? And to Commissioner Hannah Sol's point earlier, what can we do to make, make things more streamlined and, and facilitate business growth? And so obviously anytime you're talking to an existing business in the community, as they look at future growth opportunities, they're going to voice the fact that, that, that they may see hurdles in their way, or, or they may see things that they see as, as costing them money or, or impacting their efficiency. And so that's one of our jobs as a, a chamber of Commerce and, and economic development. Listen to our members, listen to our business community and, and, and help facilitate conversations and efforts on, on a number of topics there. And, and, you know, I'll commend, commend Ron and Jason and the rest of the city staff. Because as you saw at the meeting last Friday, you know, they, they come and they explain the technical details of programs. And they, they, they help educate and they help better understand how, how businesses and how our private sector can work within, within the context of a, of a, a program that comes out of the city. And so I think that that's where that, that type of engagement and to that point, you know, without diving real deep into the data just based anecdotally off the conversations I've had and the visits I've been on, there's the two pieces. One is working between jurisdictions and amongst jurisdictions. And the other is, is what can we do to make it, make it more efficient, make it more streamlined for, for companies to grow and companies to invest in Manhattan, Kansas? And, and that's something that obviously we're always going to be, be interested in representing on behalf of our local business community.
I serve as the Manhattan representative to the Flint Hills Regional Council on the board. And I'm, I appreciate the, your language with regard to including more of a regional approach. I haven't always felt that the chamber was regional, regionally focused. And I do think that's terribly important, that we expand broader than the confines of our city or our county to achieve that success. People live everywhere now and they don't just live in, within boundaries. And we saw that, that's what I meant about remote work too, how important that is. So what do you have in mind? What are some, I mean, I, I, I'm familiar with the work of the Flint Hills Regional Council. What is it you have in mind as the chamber with regard to working across the city boundary? And then you're just talking about Potawatomi County and Riley County or, or anything bigger than that?
Obviously, if, if issues rise to a regional level that are impactful to, to our region's growth and our community's growth, you know, we're going to engage in those at whatever level originally they need to be in, they need to be engaged in. We obviously do a lot of work directly with Potawatomi County Economic Development because we have a formal partnership in the, the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. And I think that that's something those that, folks that have been involved in that and have been able to see the advancement of that over the last three years or so. From, you know, just getting its start to now being a, a, a active organization. And that's how we are, that's how we represent ourselves to the outside world, right? That's how we represent ourselves at an outward facing standpoint is the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. And to the regionalism point, what that allows you to do is it allows you to tell somebody that's coming here that if they want to live in an apartment downtown, above a, above a retail store, they can do that. If they want to, you know, if they want to live out on the lake, they can do that. If they want to live in a suburban subdivision and if they want to run cattle every morning before they, before they put on a coat and tie and head into work, they can do that too. And so, you know, there's just so much to leverage here because of the, because of the, the, you know, the opportunity that exists in this region. That, that from an economic development standpoint, we have to be regional. We just, we, we have no choice. And we, we have to sell ourselves regionally. Whether it's to existing companies or to companies from the outside. And so, you know, to, to the point of then what does that mean? What, what nitty-gritty does that get down into? I mean, I think that becomes, that becomes more issue or, or initiative-based oftentimes. I mean, you know, we've, we've obviously, there's, there's projects that go on that I mean, you know, we've, we've obviously, there's, there's projects that go on that impact multiple counties, impact multiple jurisdictions that we're involved with, whether they be economic development prospects or just general growth prospects, infrastructure, you know, and some of the things, especially as you look east where, where, where a lot of growth is happening and what the city does there from a, from a partnership standpoint and agreements related to infrastructure. So we're going to, and that impacts where we can locate businesses in the future. It impacts what developers can do in the future. So we're going to definitely stay engaged there. But, but so much of that is, is initiative and issue-driven. It probably, I'd be doing a disservice to, to dive into the, into the specifics on any of those in this setting. But, but again, we can't do, we can't do economic development in Manhattan, Kansas without being regional. And so, and so that's why we've, we've gone that route and, and we feel like it's, it's had positive impact.
That's been the approach of the Regional Council also, is the project depends on who's, who's involved depends on the project. And because people typically buy in to something that they feel affects them. And if Chase County doesn't feel like it affects them, they're not going to support, you know? So it's specific by project. I'm pleased to hear the Spark Report. Sarah, I felt like that you've made a lot of progress this year. And I'm anxious to hear more and I'll call you for coffee. So I can hear more. The economic indicators, I am interested in metrics, as Yusha mentioned, and the ability to evaluate your project, your progress beyond just four columns on a spreadsheet. So as we move along, this is an increase of money and I feel like we have to be accountable for that. So if you're prepared to keep giving us information, that's what we need. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yep. And there's, there's obviously the jobs component, but I would encourage all of you, second week of January Leaders Retreat, we are going to, we are going to have a session at the Leaders Retreat where we, you know, we bring in an economist and that work is underway right now to really take a deep dive into those numbers. And so the numbers Jason showed that were, see, we've got some specific numbers that we track and that is part of our contract with the city and that we report to you. But, but going even further into those and better understanding what that means both today, but also looking into the future. So thank you for comments, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. I think, you know, a couple of years ago when we, we, we said we'd support this plan, I think the plan's a good one. And the only thing that I see lacking in here, and it's already been mentioned twice, is, you know, how do you measure this, the metric thing? And that's hard to do. And, you know, I've been, I've been thinking about that. And I would like to see in the next report, you know, a metric that we call return on investment. And on one side of this spreadsheet, you would basically say, okay, this is where our money comes from. It's coming from private people. It's coming from grants, coming from federal, it's coming from state, it's coming from county, maybe two counties, maybe three in the region. It's coming from the city, it's coming from the university. And you just lay that out. And then you add it up and you say, it's this many zillion dollars, whatever it happens to be. On the other side, what's the return on investment? And you've got some of that in the report here in different places. Number of jobs, just, you know, flat number. Salary, an average salary, capital investment. Maybe, maybe building assessment, you know, go along with that because that, that translates into property tax dollars. Is there any way to trace that to sales tax, you know? Who knows? That would be a, an estimate, like if you created a million dollars worth of salary of 30% of that is spent in town, then that should translate into, into X. I think that'd be some hard numbers that we could throw out to the citizens to say, here's what you're getting. You know, and I, I think that could be done and it wouldn't just be a guess, you know, you could, you could lay it out. Now, there'd be some little ancillary things, like on the other side with money, you, you talked about childcare and you talked about housing. So that'd be initiatives, you could say, okay, childcare, we put this much into it, what did that translate into? Did it help us with the job piece? The same with, you know, workforce housing. We're going to throw, what, 10% of the EcoDevo into that? And we've got to be able to trace how that's going to help. And, and we always mention the media thing and that's nice, but it's people that hit a website. But I'd still include that because again, you know, maybe you can correlate that to salaries, jobs, et cetera. And I think that's the piece that's been missing. And, and that would be, I think, the nice thing to add next year. Because I think you've got a good plan here and, and we're pulling everything together. And I think we're going to dig out of where we are for sure and, and be positive in the future. And I think that, that'd be the only thing. And I think, you know, at least three of the commissioners mentioned that, something else on, on a metric, but not, not quite as specific as what I'm trying to lay out here. And, and you guys can tweak that and come up with something I think that'll work. But, but appreciate it. Good, good presentation.
Thank you. Yep. Took some good notes there and we'll, we'll definitely, that's a conversation we'd be happy to have. And again, I think we'll see some, some numbers and some economic analysis coming out of, out of what we're going to see at the Leaders Retreat. And that's definitely something we can look at carrying forward. So thank you all for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your continued support of economic development.
So we're going to talk military relations next?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm just going to briefly introduce Janet to come up and do our military presentation. I think you all know this, Janet is extremely passionate about what she does. But we rolled Janet's role into our economic development team, which she has been, she's taken that ball and ran with it. But I think the most important reason why we do that is, and I think we learned it this year, I've heard from a lot of, of the retailers around the community and the restaurants, I think we've got a full understanding of the impact of Fort Riley on our community in March when, when they began to be able to come back to the community and, and eat in the restaurants and, and participate in community activities. How important Fort Riley is this community? And, and so we're proud that Janet is leading that effort for us and, and proud that she's here tonight to make her presentation.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for having me here again tonight. I'm starting out with talking about economic impact of Fort Riley. It's pretty, pretty black and white. It's the same from when I presented it back in July. The new economic impact survey comes, will be released at the Leaders Retreat that we've mentioned is January 13th and 14th. But it's always good to remember that Fort Riley really does a, a large amount of business in Manhattan and the region. And that the population of Fort Riley really is over 67,000 people who are connected either directly or indirectly to the military installation. They compile this information every year. It's accessible on their website all the time. I handed out the books to you all this past July. But, you know, it's, it's really easy to get comfortable with the fact that Fort Riley soldiers and family members come into Manhattan. But it was less than a year ago when they were prevented, prevented from coming into town. And I know I remember going from not having to wait for a table to having to wait for an hour for a table at a restaurant. I think we can all remember that. So that's really the, the thing to take away, that they really do have a day-to-day impact on Main Street in Manhattan. I'm going to talk about MRC lunches this year. I'm, I'm really proud with the quality of the presenters and guest speakers that we have coming to Manhattan MRC lunches. We were in person since March of this year. We had our Victory Week Lunch on Fort Riley with over 130 people there. I think that was the largest lunch we had had in a very long time. We hosted a wide-ranging field of high-profile guest speakers, included Jerry Moran, Pictured. We had the State Commissioner of Behavioral Health Services from the Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services, Andrew Brown. We had the Director of McCain Auditorium, Todd Holmberg, Governor's Military Council, Perry Wiggins, and the Adjutant General for the State of Kansas, Major General David Weishaar. I've already got through June booked for next year with a real exciting group. And I also have Senator, excuse me, Congressman Tracy Mann coming in September. So, so we get a really wide-range, good group of speakers and great attendance. We're not quite back to our pre-pandemic numbers. However, we are hosting more and more people every month. And as a testament to the quality of this event, we currently have more sponsors than ever before supporting us. We really believe that MRC Lunch is truly the best place for local Manhattanites to interact with Fort Riley uniform and civilian personnel and their families. And as you recall during the pandemic, the MRC Lunch really was a good place for Manhattan locals and business owners to directly talk to Fort Riley leadership informally about COVID policy with regards to Fort Riley and the access of soldiers into Manhattan. Advocacy and economic development. I'm going to rehash some of the things, some of them you've heard before. Some of them might be a little bit new, but on April 21st, Governor Laura Kelly signed the Kansas House Bill 2066, known as the Occupational License Reciprocity Bill, into law. The legislation provides expedited license reciprocity, the recognition of professional occupational licenses gained in one state by another to all Kansans, not just the military. While a great help to military spouse employment, Kansas and Manhattan will benefit by filling much-needed jobs in sectors including teachers and nursing. The Defense Community Infrastructure Program, or DCEP, Darren mentioned this a little bit. As you all likely recall, DCEP provides funds for infrastructure projects in communities that neighbor military installations where the project adds military value to both the local community and especially the installation. So we were awarded by the Department of Defense almost $6 million to complete the extra 50 feet width of runway to accommodate Class III 100,000-plus-pound aircraft for military use. And as we discussed, it's critical to the readiness of the First Infantry Division that they be able to use our regional airport for both personnel and equipment transportation and for the quality life of soldiers and their families in Fort Riley. I was very proud to be asked by Ron Fier to present Lessons Learned from the Airport Runway Expansion Project Submission Process on behalf of the city at November's Association of Defense Communities Installation Innovation National Conference in November. In addition to presenting at the Association of Defense Communities about DCEP, I attended many panels with information of use to Manhattan, including how communities are using regional and state defense alliances to organize at higher level, at higher levels to support their defense sectors. That's, I used to do the Kansas Military Alliance. We are bringing that back next year. Economic Development Strategies for Communities and States to Enhance Your Defense Sector, The Vital Role of Veteran and Spouse Employment, Establishing Military Spouse Co-Working Spaces, How Can Communities and the DOD Work Together to Provide Quality Child Care? And I also attended the ADC State Council where a group from across the country discussed how communities can improve occupational licensure, K-12 education, health and wellbeing, and encouraged the DOD to clarify the military value analysis used for basing decisions in BRAC. As you can see, many of the things that Manhattan is concerned about, the Department of Defense and the Army is concerned about. So likewise, with Fort Riley as one of the primary talent pipelines in the region, I've been actively working with Chamber Talent Strategies Coordinator Amber Wilhelm and Business Retention and Expansion Manager George Cant, engaging with Fort Riley to both assist with filling vacant positions in Manhattan with transitioning soldiers and military spouses and to engage the military and military-connected with Manhattan Hype Young Professional Program. We've actually had a few takers from the military into Hype. So I'm really excited that that has worked. As I like to say, I'm not, I'm the old professional. We have a young professional in the office running the program. Likewise, I'm helping with bringing appropriate Fort Riley personnel to the table at various Manhattan-area Chamber of Commerce committees and roundtables regarding childcare, workforce manufacturing, and healthcare. Now more than ever, Manhattan MRC is engaged in assisting our economic development efforts in Manhattan by building Fort Riley as a part of Manhattan's regional economic development story and to leverage Fort Riley assets of talent, logistic capabilities, cyber, medical resources, and defense contracting to drive business retention and create opportunity for business attraction in the area. And finally, I'm also involved in the Governor's Challenge to Prevent Suicide Amongst the Service Member, Veteran and Family Population. We've been meeting since the summer on that. And looking forward, there, there will be a Behavioral Health Conference on Fort Riley in the middle of the year next year, and we're working towards that, among many other things with that project. And then finally, programming or the fun stuff. The Little Apple Brigade, it was great to be back in person in 2021 with our Little Apple Brigade events. We held the Spring Social and the Ball this year. We did have some special accommodations for the Spring Social back in April. But no one really seemed to mind that we ran that event in two shifts, just like holiday receptions on post, because everyone was so happy to be out and together. The Little Apple Brigade Ball was this past October and hosted almost 100 attendees. We had the Commanding General there, which is always nice. And we are closing in on the max number of Little Apple Brigade members, which is 50. And we have already recruited K-State's incoming president, Richard Linton, as a Little Apple Brigade member. So we're excited about that. Military Family Appreciation Night at the Cow Valley Rodeo. Again, another event where people were just so excited that we were back in person. We had the best-attended pre-rodeo picnic in years and the best-attended Cow Valley Rodeo opening night in the history of the event. Virtually all of the 1,500 tickets that we recruited sponsors to pay for and distributed amongst Fort Riley with the help of Fort Riley, with the Garrison and the USO, virtually all of those tickets were used. And that's quite amazing. This is a really great event and I really do enjoy working to get that one going again this year. We had Fort Riley Day at K-State, the best football game of the year. I don't care if we win or lose or any other game. It's always so much fun. We were back in full swing in 2021. We held our pre-game tailgate at Toynton Family Baseball Stadium. And I'm looking forward to getting that going again this year. AUSA Annual Meeting, it was held October 10th to 13th in Washington, DC. I have to admit, planning for this year was a real challenge. There were many, many constant changes and event cancellations in the weeks and days leading up to the conference. However, we had 20 attendees from Manhattan. We had lunch with Four Star General Paul Funk, former 1ID Commander and the current head of the Training and Doctrine Command. And we met with almost the entirety of our Kansas delegation. And we also ended up getting to hold our chapter social. We had to move its location, but we had many, many First Infantry Division alumni. I did call this year AUSA Light, but everyone who attended and especially the newcomers were really impressed with how this year's trip went. So I told them, just wait till next year and I'll see you there. And then we also had the Manhattan Veterans Day Parade. We celebrated and honored veterans of the First Gulf War. Believe it or not, 2021 is the 30th anniversary of Operations Desert Shield and Desert Storm. This year, the parade was just about up to full capacity with almost 80 entries and just under 2,000 participants. This year, we officially named the post-parade indoor ceremony at Peace Memorial Auditorium, the Ceremony of Honor. And we also created Vet Fest, an outdoor fest with food trucks and static displays and jumpy houses from, and so, excuse me, for parade attendees to enjoy after the parade as well. As always, we like to thank the city for their help executing this event. We really couldn't do this without you. You let us host a lot of the event here in this building. So thank you. It's been a really busy year and an especially busy fall. Our work at the Manhattan MRC continues to build and maintain a strong relationship with the senior leadership of Fort Riley. Thank you for the opportunity to represent Manhattan and continue the good work for growing our community. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I'm really looking forward to how you're going to top the $6 million DCEP grant for next year. So get to work on that.
I'll give it a shot.
I, Mayor's comment about return on investment comes to mind, that $6 million runway there. But I also wanted to, I think you kind of went quickly through it, but that MRC almost served for much of the pandemic as a way for the decision-makers on post and decision-makers in the community and at the university to kind of connect. And I appreciate that. That alone should be a return on investment in my mind. You've done so much and continue to help. And thank you for all the, the work you're currently doing and will do in the future.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think you do a great job of coordinating, and the list keeps growing, and minus COVID, I'm sure that the number of people is kind of an economic boon to the community too, for all the people that you bring together. And bringing the military together with a civilian community is fire and water sometimes, or oil and water, oil and water, not fire. And so, it's important to have someone doing what you're doing, and you do a good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Janet, I think you've been doing this for a while, but you've never asked for a raise. I think you've been at the same point for some time, and the challenges are keeping, are stronger than ever before, and I don't know when you sleep, but I do know that you work well with everybody, whether it's Junction City and Craig Bender, Fort Riley, Chambers, regardless of which chamber it is, because you work with Pot County, Geary County, Riley County, anybody that calls you, you answer your emails rather quickly. You're always very accessible and very approachable and very friendly and professional. And that says a lot about your leadership in the community, and you're very understated and humble. I think it's time you asked for a raise at some point, because I think it must be exhausting.
My bosses, right?
It's a labor of love, but you know, you need a break every now and then, and maybe that can come in other ways. So thank you for all you're doing and for keeping everything, making it look like it's easy when it's really not that easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you've got them beat on the ROI slide metric, because you've got three good numbers there. One, you can say how many soldiers and civilians are there, and you could actually compute that into salaries if you looked at the pay thing. But for sure, when you say, you know, city investment was around $45,000, return was $6 million on the airport, that's a winner. Great job.
Thanks. Thank you.
Well, last and never least, is our Convention Visitors Bureau Visit Manhattan Quarterly Presentation, and of course Karen Hibbert is here, and I just want to say how impressed I've been this year. The pandemic was extremely difficult on the hospitality industry, obviously, and it was really hard on Karen, who loves this community and loves the operators of our attractions and our hotels, and she really took it personal, and even though we kept trying to cheer her up every day and say, this isn't your fault. But I've been really impressed, 2021, how she and Marcia have rebounded and been able to reinstate a lot of our programming, although at a reduced amount, obviously because of the TGT taxes. And so, I just want to publicly say, because they're still not operating at full capacity staff-wise, but they are doing the same amount of work. So I just wanted to say how much I am impressed with Marcia and Karen for their work and glad that they're leading this program on our behalf. So with that, I will turn it over to Karen.
Thanks, Jason. Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to address you again on fourth quarter activities. I also want to commend you that as you're thinking into 2022, that you've already moved the January 4th meeting so that you can go to basketball games. I don't know if you know this about me, but I keep stats at the basketball games in my section, and we missed a game tonight, but the Cats won 74-59, so all is well. So I am very pleased to be able to give you the fourth quarter report as to what we do, all of our efforts as we market, as you know, is to fulfill our mission, and that is to attract visitors to the community to help expand the local area economy. Month-to-month, our STAR report is looking a little bit better, but not nearly where we should be. Month-to-month, we had an occupancy in November of 48%, average daily rate of $114.35, revenue per room is $54.93. That's the piece that we really need to be paying attention to, is how profitable is our lodging for our folks that run that lodging. And so, we're improving from where we were, but we still have a ways to go from what we could be. But through month-to-month, those revenues generated, created $2.1 million for us. In taking 2020 out of the picture, on average, from 2017 through 2019, we're still running a bit behind about 7% in our November occupancy. Year-to-date through November, we're still a little bit behind. Our occupancy year-to-date is 52.7% occupancy, with the average daily rate of $103.34. The revenue per room is $54.43. Obviously, the supply that we have, the demand that we have generates the revenue of about We still have a couple of weeks to go in December. I wanted to share with you that the first week of December of 2021, thanks to Kansas Farm Bureau bringing their meeting back in person, it helped provide us with a 48.3% occupancy for that first week. You can see again that that was an improvement over 2020 a little bit, and certainly, we have a long ways to go from where we were in 19. The second week of December reflects the KSU graduation week, and we yielded a 56.2% occupancy. Typically, December is a lighter month because families are gathering together rather than lodging in hotels, and meetings typically are not held. But we are looking forward to what 2022 will bring to us. It takes an entire community working together to say thank you to those who choose to meet in Manhattan. I just want to take this time to thank you, Mayor Butler, City Commission, for providing those official welcomes to those groups that request those. It's very important that when meetings meet here in town, for you to acknowledge them, they value that time that you spend on that. I had a conversation earlier today with incoming Mayor Lynn Morrison, she needs us to improve our messaging of giving a little bit more information about those groups that do request, and I think that that only is something that we will take note of, is to give you more background information so you can be a bit more on top of what the purpose of their meeting is, why they have chosen Manhattan, so you can bring them greetings appropriately. We also want to give great thanks to the Manhattan Fire Department, the Riley County Police, Fort Riley Color Guard, and Boy Scout Troops that many times helped kick off the meetings with the presentation of colors. That's a really great opportunity for meetings to be started in a proper way, and so we couldn't do it without those groups being willing to take that time and effort. Many times, it's at 7:00 or 7:30 in the morning to kick off that meeting, but it makes it go well. And it certainly is great, this is a picture of Kansas Farm Bureau meeting in person, and I think Brad would agree, he was really glad to have that group back at the Manhattan Conference Center. We'd like to show you with what our quarter-to-quarter activities look like. Fourth quarter, we worked directly with 20 meetings here in Manhattan. Those meetings represented 1,990 attendees with an estimated sleeping rooms of 2,070, which gave an estimated economic impact of $1.2 million. Certainly, keep in mind, there are additional meetings that book directly into the hotels that many times don't need our services, but these, this slide reflects those meetings that we work directly with. This is another opportunity to look at our fourth quarter meetings. I think you will agree with us that we greatly have improved from where we were last year. Fourth quarter, we were setting at five meetings that we worked with to move up to 20. We still have a ways to go with where we normally have been in that fourth quarter, but we're moving upward. This slide shows where our meetings were year-to-date. Certainly, '27 through '2019 is what we're really striving for, and we are feeling that that 2022 is looking much brighter than what we have experienced even in 2011. We are a bit concerned with that new variant, though, as it's raised its ugly head. We have understood that we have some meetings that were full board to come on in person and have chosen to go back to virtual. We anticipate that we'll have still a variety of hybrid meetings, and again, until the pandemic has totally stopped, it's still going to wreak havoc on us as far as meetings, and that causes a huge problem with staffing and being able to effectively service those attendees properly. As we've shared with you, and certainly our third quarter presentation, we talked in depth about sports and our efforts to market sports. Typically, the fourth quarter is a little bit lighter with sports activities, just because of the time of the year that it is. But fourth quarter, we did host five different events that yielded 1,700 attendees, about 85 room nights, with 157,802 estimated economic impact. Those were running events and bowling tournaments that were here in our community. Much of our website traffic continues to position us as a drivable destination. You will notice consistently that our top states that are looking at us are Kansas, Illinois, Missouri, Texas, and Oklahoma. I think Nebraska doesn't care about us, but I do think that it's very interesting that Texas and Illinois, that's where our air service is from, that they also are very keenly interested in looking at our website, what's happening, how are we doing? Our open rate on our email marketing continues to be strong, we have a solid open rate of about 30%. Our communications team does a great job, our emails land in your inbox on Thursdays, we market that to see, if you haven't opened it, we resend it on a Tuesday, so it gives you two opportunities to open, and we really feel that that's why we have, our persistence helps give us a high open rate. And we do have many reasons to celebrate. As we've shared with you throughout the year, our social media is very effective. We've increased our followers by 18.6% throughout the entirety of 2021, so that we're very, again, kudos to our communications team for keeping tabs on that and making that happen. And this slide just breaks down our social media numbers for the fourth quarter. We have increased our presence on other platforms like Twitter, Instagram, and Pinterest to create larger audiences, all helping to get our message to our visitors. And I also want you to note that none of these numbers include our December results, as we're still in December. We talked in the third quarter about building relationships with travel writers, how that pays off. We hosted, as you might recall, we partnered with the state of Kansas, that we had three travel writers that were in Manhattan, Kansas for about two and a half hours. Well, that two-and-a-half-hour investment paid off big time because we had the opportunity to do a podcast with the travel writer that was from Atlanta, Georgia, that we had an opportunity to do about a 30-minute interview about Manhattan, Kansas, what makes us unique, what's unique to the region. Anita was very, very impressed in that short amount of time that she was in Kansas, but specifically with Manhattan. So we had the opportunity to be on a podcast, what I love about podcasts, they live forever. I have a dear friend that lives in Gainesville, I said, hey, you might want to listen to that, and she did and was very impressed. So we hope that we will see folks from Georgia, certainly we have military traffic coming and going from Georgia as well, but just to have that opportunity to entice people to come to visit us in the Flint Hills, I think is very, very key. We also, on the far end of this slide, had the opportunity to host a travel writer that then had a book that was printed and came in for a book signing. Roxy on the Road, she was here, she has written a book called "100 Things to Do in Kansas Before You Die." She was in, we hosted her at the Flint Hills Discovery Center, had that opportunity to sell that book, and it features Aggieville, Flint Hills Discovery Center, Conza Prairie, and many more things that she lists, restaurants that are must as you come into Manhattan. But a clever title, and she was very, very pleased with what she learned and wanted to encourage others to share with as well. We also hosted Vanessa Whiteside, she is a travel influencer, she's actually been to Manhattan twice this year, and came because there was so much that she had to do and tell about, that when we partnered with the I-70 Association, she eagerly said, I'm coming back to Manhattan to be able to tell people. She was here for a day and a half, she made several social media posts, we were always grateful for her opportunity to really check out and help promote things that are new. When she came, she went to Flight Crew and had great coffee and told a great story about that as well, as well as many other highlighting events when she was here. Last Wednesday, our entire state experienced a destructive windstorm. Strong winds caused damage across the state of Kansas. As a result, the Grinch, which we are kindly calling the Wind, felled our signature tree. The tree had to be sent in for repairs and no longer lights the Blue Earth Plaza. 36 feet of that tree has been damaged, causing the tree to need to be completely rebuilt to come back in its glory for 2022. We are confident, with the vision and the passion of Whoville, which there are a couple of members of Whoville present in our audience this evening, the countless businesses who support the Festival of Lights, that together they will continue to help make the season bright for Manhattan in the years to come. Donations are being accepted to help with that repair now. You can certainly go to the website www mhkfestivaloflights.com to make your donation now to help with those improvements for next year and the repair of the tree. But we do want to share with you this evening our video of the Spirit of the Holidays video, which ran on all of our social media platforms, so take note. we're confident that our efforts of bringing everything together on our website under one page by using the QR code, that that has been very, very effective. That website, the Spirit of the Holidays, is our number-one page. When I create, when we created this presentation to send to you, at that time, our webpage had over 4,000 views. And we had the windstorm, we had a lot of people coming to look at us. As of today, our page views were 7,886. That's well over what our front page normally has. Posters, coasters, table tents, door hangers in the hotel rooms, all have reminded the visitors and the locals of holiday happenings. Certainly, the video that we just shared with you anticipated the coming of Christmas, the coming of Santa, but the Spirit of the Holidays, what the joy of the QR code is, there's still activities that are going on. We have New Years in which to ring in, which there are a lot of activities that are on there. The other thing that is great about this is, as there are more events and we help our locals become more aware, you can also submit your events so it's on that calendar so you can see what there is to see and do and enjoy. We've ran ads, these are examples of our Spirit of the Holiday video, which we shared with you. We had a video ad with the Festival of Tree Lighting Ceremony. We had a Festival of Lights Tree Lighting Ceremony video ad through the Festival of Lights page. We also had, through the Festival of Lights page, the Family Carnival ad. Total paid ad impressions were 340,000, link clicks were 5,000. Certainly, people receive information in a variety of ways. This is a newspaper ad, the newspaper ad, that featured the Festival of Lights Tree Lighting Ceremony. We ran this in the Manhattan Mercury with a distribution of 9,700 daily, and 10,200 folks got to see it in the Saturday. daily and ten thousand two hundred folks got to see it on, in the Saturday publication. It ran in the Junction City Union with a distribution of three thousand and the Wamigo, Wamigo Smoke Signal with a distribution of ten thousand four hundred. And then our email newsletter ad that we partnered with, with Travel Kansas Marketing, that distribution went to over twenty thousand folks as well as sponsored media posts. We do look forward to twenty twenty-two. Our twenty twenty-two Visitors Guide, this is the cover and an example of what you're going to see. It's slated to come off of the press any day now. We anticipate that it will be to us before the end of the year. The cover of the guide celebrates ten years, yes, ten years of the Flint Hills Discovery Center. And the guide is also designed to yet, once again, use the QR code to encourage that traveler, that visitor, that local, to go to our website to learn more in-depth information about it. We look forward to this marketing tool yet again being a key part in helping to welcome our visitors to Manhattan. We do look forward to partnering with the City of Manhattan for twenty twenty-two to help expand the local area economy by attracting visitors. When we submitted our twenty twenty-two budget to the city, we estimated that the transient guest tax will improve, but still will, we estimated that the collections would be down by about twelve percent from what they had been in our, in our more solid years. Our budget request, in order to fulfill the contract between the city and the CBB to promote tourism, is for one million, one hundred and four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars from those transient guest tax collections, that those would be directed our way in order to help us to accomplish our goals to market Manhattan. We will continue to work diligently to attract those visitors to meet, to compete, and to enjoy our community and region. Tourism is an essential segment of the overall economic well-being of, of the Manhattan community. You can see as we've, we've spent a lot of time this evening on economic development, we firmly believe that folks, businesses, look at Manhattan first as a visitor and then they look at it as a business that they want to invest in, a community that they want to invest their, their business in. A successful tourism effort translates into jobs, taxes, and revenues, all for our visitors to say, oh, Manhattan. So I am confident that I can speak for the entire Convention and Visitors Bureau team that it is an honor to promote Manhattan. With that, who might have the first question for me this evening?
Yeah, no, I think, I don't have a question, but did you want to speak? I just wanted to comment. Thank you for the presentation. All of my family visited for Thanksgiving and we ended up there
Good.
For the lighting ceremony and they just loved it. It's part of our Christmas card because we took a picture by the ornaments there, but it was, the weather was perfect, the attendance was great. I don't know how you tabulated, how many people were there, but it was very joyous for my family. It's, it's a memory we cherish and I hope others feel the same way and I think they do. So I know a lot of effort goes into promoting it and marketing it and getting all of those things printed and the fundraising effort itself is tremendous and probably, like I said, just started already for, for revamping it and making, making it as good as it was or even better for next year. So I do appreciate that concept of having also something every day for people to do here. I do have a question for you for the transient guest tax. So, but I don't know if I'm saying this, Verbo and Airbnb? How do you, first, do you collect transient guest tax
Yes.
Of them? And two, how do you track them like you do for the hotel rooms?
We subscribe and I apologize, I can get you that information. We do subscribe to an Airbnb report that is very similar to the STAR report. I believe in our second quarter, I had put that information in. So, and that, that Airbnb report, that fluctuates time of the year. We might have, for example, you might have three hundred and seventy-eight potential Airbnbs, but depending on the activity, maybe people take that off of their market. So, the, the collections that come from Airbnbs help certainly, but it is not as significant as to what our traditional lodging is.
Right. But the transient guest tax percentage is the same?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
So, I, I guess I just, I'm still trying to learn it and understand that, what it means to our economy, because Manhattan, when we were looking at how to regulate our license or whatever it is we need to do to figure out what's going on in Manhattan, there were close to two or three hundred in the city of Manhattan. I had no idea. So if they're not staying in our hotels, they're staying somewhere
Right.
In, in the city of Manhattan. And oftentimes, it's, if it's three, a three-room thing for, you know, two or three hundred dollars, then it's split amongst three different couples that are staying there or whatever it might be. And a lot of homes and alumni stay here, but they're also renting those out. I think a lot of landlords are also renting them out if they don't have students that are renting those properties. So I wasn't sure how you measure that metric and how we collect, because I think that's also having an economic revenue, a positive impact on our community. But I don't want our hotels to suffer.
Right.
So I don't know what measures are being taken at the national level or however it is to make, how do we gauge this? Kind of like what happened to taxis and Uber. How do we, how do we gauge it? Are hotels going out of style? Are they going to be there for good? What's, what's going on?
I think it's another offering. I don't think that Airbnbs will ever replace hotels. I think different, we could take a survey here of each one of us as we travel, what your travel style of choice is. But I think when, we've invested heavily in the meeting market and when you're having a meeting, I'll use that as an example, when, when you're having a meeting, you traditionally, typically, maybe that's a better word, typically, need or want to be with those meeting attendees, which would cause you to stay in a hotel rather than an Airbnb. I think through the pandemic, what we have learned is people have wanted to get away, experience something different, and maybe didn't feel comfortable. There were so many things uncertain when we were really in the throes of the pandemic that what, the number one thing that we need to all remember is kudos to the lodging industry because they took extreme efforts to make sure that everything was beyond clean. Every effort was being made. But I think as humans, we were thinking, oh my goodness, somebody has been in that room before. But I can tell you that the lodging industry was above the top. Their standards were extremely high. If you thought you were going to be exposed to COVID, you weren't going to get it at a hotel.
Right. No, I agree with you. I, I agree with that completely. I think they're held to a different standard
Yes.
Is my concern. Not concern, but I, I think that's one of the things when you talk about conferences, I think you're right, there's a market there. They will stay where there's a conference and maybe business is paying for, for their fees or registration or lodging or whatever it might be. So I was wondering if somebody was coming for a basketball game or a football game and a group of them wanted to stay somewhere. I wonder if they're picking a hotel or if they're picking one of these other spots to stay. And I, I don't know how to, like I said, pick up on that type of data.
The, the only thing that I can share with you is our Air DNA reports
Okay.
And I can include that. I can't tell you why, why a consumer would choose one over another. I don't have any data that I can
Sure.
That I can solidly say
No, I
Why?
No, I understand. But my friends are doing that and my children are doing that.
Sure.
I haven't, but I, we've thought about it.
Mm-hmm.
So I just don't know what it looks like. But that, that's my only question and concern as a community. How do we address that and what do we do about it, if anything?
Mm-hmm.
But I want to make sure we are collecting the transient guest tax for everybody that's staying in Manhattan, that's supposed to be paying
Right.
Transient guest tax. So that's my question there. But other than that, I think you're doing terrific. I think it's good that we're having so many people come and visit and I see everything being very busy and I think people are buying more local and staying more local and doing more local activities. So I, I do appreciate all the efforts that are going into that and the marketing strategy as well.
Thank you.
So thank you once again.
If they're under age thirty-five, they're probably staying in an Airbnb.
Yeah, they probably are.
Karen Lyndon-Morth, I appreciate the experience that people have here over the holidays and I think the Whoville and the Chamber and the city, all of us have contributed and the, the atmosphere at Blue Earth Plaza is just electric and that's why people keep coming back from out of town, just to be here for that. And, you know, there might, it rise, you know, the tide comes and goes, but I think there's a lot of excitement and, you know, it's sad that our tree was damaged, helped hurt the image for the rest of the season, but it, so it's terribly important that we market Manhattan and the way that you're doing and I, I think you do a great job I, as, as a whole and the Chamber, all of you for promote, just promoting and showing. When I, when I have talked with groups who come here, they are so excited about coming to Manhattan. We've wanted to come here for five years, you know, just all the stories you hear and they're always enthusiastic. And so, we have a great commodity here that people want to, to, to participate in. And so, marketing is key.
Thank you.
And of course, I've said it before, I'm particularly pleased with that Spirit of the Holidays, the, you know, okay, because we thought about that for years and we finally, this year, were able to pull together all the different diverse groups and put them on one website. And you had it set up where they could go in and change their dates and things of that nature. And I tried to attend all of them. I missed a couple because there were two at the same time, but, but I went to as many of them as was humanly possible. And, and, and I, I just think it was highly successful, like, like that one little simple twelve drinks at Christmas, which you can't do that in one night, folks.
[laughing]
Some of the college kids maybe tried that, but no, you know, you limit that to two. So, so I went down there a few nights, but that one I found interesting because, you know, just talking to the, the restaurant owners, they had all kinds of traffic driven there.
Yeah.
There were a hundred and fifty original cards. They figured there'd be a hundred and fifty participants. It was over four hundred and fifty people
Right.
That participated. And you said nobody came from Nebraska, that's why I wanted to mention this. And I, I think I was at the pool house and I talked to a couple that were down here visiting someone from Nebraska.
There you go.
Omaha. And they were in there and the guy said, oh, this is pretty cool. I thought I'd just do this. He said, you know, I spent five hundred dollars down here tonight.
Awesome.
Shopping and, and going. And that, that's success, you know, on, on, on that level. So, so I'm quite pleased with that and I think next year we'll be able to make that work a little better, you know. The only one that wasn't as great as I hoped was SantaCon, where we collected more toys than Santa Claus has participated, but the kids got some toys out of it.
That's right.
And that was the first time for that in Aggieville, but we'll see if we can get some more business for that next year. But I think, I think excellent job, the marketing on that and, you know, the website hits, all that. It's, it, it was great.
Good. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you all.
Public comment on this item? Doesn't look like it, so I guess that means we can come back to the convention?
Mayor, I move that we receive the twenty twenty joint economic development report, authorize city administration to finalize and the mayor and city clerk to execute the Fort Riley Promotion Economic Development and Tourism and Convention contracts for twenty twenty-two with the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hattasal?
Aye.
Commissioner Esbrock?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruddy?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you everyone for attending and the meeting is adjourned.